Okay, Phil, thank you. Ready to go.
Okay. Good morning and welcome to the January 14th, 2021, meeting of the Ventura County Planning Commission. Will you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll? Meekan is muted.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Here.
Great, thank you. Commissioner McPhail?
Here.
Commissioner King?
Here.
And I think that's it. Sorry. Thank you.
What about Commissioner White?
I called Commissioner White first. Commissioner White, are you here?
I'm here. I didn't hear you call me, but I am here. So I think we're all here. Thank you. Okay, that's item number three. Item number four is the annual meeting to elect the Chair and Vice Chair and to set the schedule of hearings for the year 2021. And the next procedure is for me to hand to the Planning Director, Director Ward, the gavel. And I don't have a gavel. I have a suitable mallet that will, I will symbolically and virtually hand over to Director Ward. Here you go.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair White, for that ceremonial handing of the gavel. So opening up to the Commission, would you like to take any nominations for Chair for the 2021 calendar year?
Director Ward?
Yes, Commissioner Duquesne?
I'd like to nominate Jim King to be our Chair in the year 2021.
I will second that.
Thank you, Commissioner McPhail. Are there any other nominations?
Director Ward?
Yes, Commissioner King?
I don't have any other nominations, but I want to make sure that the rest of the Commission is aware that during this COVID-19 situation, I will be completely unable to attend meetings in the, in the county chambers. And that presents a few issues, one of which is, if any Commission members are present in chambers, it's not always easy from Zoom to see them in order to recognize them. So I want to make sure that the Commission is comfortable with that before they move forward.
Any comments by other Commissioners in regards to that point?
I know that other municipalities such as Thousand Oaks are going 100% Zoom. And while there are challenges, I'm confident that the tech support that we have in place can overcome them. It's not ideal, but I think it's better that we take care of our health and we continue to do everything we can to stop the spread.
I, I-
I'd like to add that I have great confidence in the county to make Zoom meetings work for the foreseeable future. And Commissioner King, if he's elected, and I think he will be, will be able to function just perfectly.
Okay, not hearing any further comments. Just to let you know, staff will definitely be in support of the whole Commission being remote, and we will continue to troubleshoot as you've seen us do in the past, as well as possibly interject to assist the new Chair if things remote. So we are here to help, and we will continue to hold effective hearings. So with that, I will ask Ms. Batnica to call the roll.
Chair White?
Aye.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Aye.
Commissioner McPhail?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Reluctantly, aye.
All right.
Motion carries 4-0.
So we welcome our new Chair King. And I, as Mr., Commissioner White had passed on, I will do my passing to you virtually, and you can move into the process for our selection of the Vice Chair.
Thank you. Director Ward, is this where you, are you going to ask for nomination for Vice Chair, or should I?
You should call for the nominations.
Okay, in that case, do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
Chair King?
Commissioner Duquesne?
I would like to nominate Commissioner McPhail for Vice Chair for 2021.
Commissioner White?
I would like to second that nomination.
Very well. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none. Will the Secretary please count the votes?
All right. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Aye.
Commissioner McPhail?
I guess aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries 4-0.
Now to set the hearing schedule for the year 2021, Planning Commission is available to meet as available every Thursday morning at 8:30 for the year 2021. The anticipated schedule by the Planning Director is the first and third Thursdays of the month. We need to vote to approve that calendar. Is there a motion? Yes, Commissioner McPhail?
I, I move to approve that calendar.
Is there a second? Commissioner Duquesne?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the Secretary please call the roll?
All righty, let me get the motion in here. Okay. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Aye.
Commissioner McPhail?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Motion approved 4-0.
This is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Time limit per item is five minutes. Have we received any public comments?
We have no public comments at this time.
Very well. The next item is approval of the minutes of December 17, 2020. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve? Oh, yes, Commissioner White?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Okay. Commissioner Duquesne?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Aye.
Commissioner McPhail?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Motion approved 4-0.
Thank you. Moving on to our item PL 19-0046, the applicant Somus Ranch Partners. I do not have the description in front of me. It's for a farmworker project. This time, I would like to ask each Planning Commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on time.
Commissioner White?
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Duquesne?
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner McPhail?
The only disclosure I have is when I was the Ag Commissioner, I was by that location on numerous occasions, and I know it very well.
Okay. Thank you. Chair King?
I have no disclosures.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, let me turn this over to Planner Justin Bertoline. And I'm assuming Planner Bertoline will go over the public comments information.
Good morning, Chair King and members of the Commission. My name is Justin Bertoline, Senior Planner with the RMA Planning Division. Can you share this screen, please? The item for your commission today is the Somus Ranch Farmworker Housing Complex Project, case number PL 19-0046. The request includes the approval of three entitlements which comprise the project. The first request is for the approval of a tentative parcel map which would subdivide the existing legal lot into four legal lots. The second request is for the approval of a planned development permit which would authorize the construction of a farmworker housing complex. Third request is for the approval of a conditional use permit which will authorize the construction and operation of a community wastewater treatment facility. I'd like to let anyone participating in this hearing know that if you would like to submit public comments on this item, please do so at the address shown here. Please also make sure that you include the agenda item number, number seven, in the subject line of that message. I'll again show this slide at the end, so in case that you do have comments later on, we will readdress this. The project location is located at 2789 Somus Road in the unincorporated area of Ventura County. The site has a general plan land use designation of agricultural and is zoned agricultural exclusive 40-acre minimum parcel size. The site is bound to the west and southwest by Rancho Capone High School, the City of Camarillo Library, and the City of Camarillo Desalter Facility. Agricultural properties surround the site to the north and to the east, and Somus Road or State Road 34 lies directly to the south. The site is currently used predominantly for agricultural crop production, but does also contain two residences and ancillary agricultural buildings. The proposed project does not include the request to modify or alter any of these existing structures or the uses of those structures. The following are a series of images of the existing site conditions. This is a view of the project site looking towards the northwest. And a view of the site looking towards the southwest. These are some of the agricultural buildings that exist on the site. Again, these will not be altered or modified. Slide doesn't seem to be moving forward, Mindy. Yeah, one back, please. Okay. This is a view from the project site looking south towards Somus Road. You could see to the distance on the right-hand side, the City of Camarillo Desalter Facility. And this is a view of the project site looking towards the northwest. So as I mentioned, the request is for the approval of a tentative parcel map, a conditional use permit, and a planned development permit. The proposed parcel map would subdivide the existing legal lot into four legal lots. The site will be developed solely on parcels one, two, and three, which cumulatively measure approximately 18 acres in size. Parcel four will remain unchanged, and is, I'm sorry, parcels one, two, and three cumulatively measure 18 and a half acres in size. Parcel four, which will remain unchanged, is approximately 18 acres in size. Parcels one, two, and three correspond directly to the proposed three-phase development of the project. Phase one would consist of the construction of 100 residential units, 258 parking spaces, and the construction of a community wastewater treatment facility. The wastewater treatment facility will be constructed to allow for the expansion to accommodate the planned three-phase development of the farmworker housing complex. Phase two consists of the construction of additional 100 residential units, 147 parking spaces, and at this time, the community wastewater will be, treatment facility will be expanded to accommodate the new development. The third and final phase consists of the remaining 160 residential units, 250 parking spaces, and at this time, the wastewater treatment facility will be at full buildout. Because the site is located more than 200 feet from the closest existing Camarillo City Sanitary District facility and is both outside of the city limits and sanitary district limits, the project was issued a will-not-serv letter for connection to existing sewer services. As such, the project includes the development of a community wastewater treatment facility. This facility, which will be initially constructed with phase one, will be located on the northwest corner of the project site. The primary use of recycled water will be for off-site agricultural irrigation. Treated water that cannot be used for agricultural irrigation will be disposed of onsite in the proposed seepage pit dispersal system shown on the bottom screen. This is on the western edge of the project site. The community wastewater treatment facility is a conventional membrane bioreactor type similar to the model shown here. In accordance with state water code, the facility will be operated by a state licensed operator, which in this case is Ventura Regional Sanitation District. The facility is designed to treat water to meet disinfected tertiary recycled water requirements in accordance with Title 22 standards. Access to the site will be provided by a shared access road with the City of Camarillo to the south of the project site, and a second eastern road just north of the existing Bell Ranch Road. Both roads are equally open to access, and both include right and left-hand turning lanes from Somus Road. Ventura County Transportation Division and Caltrans have both reviewed the traffic study that was prepared for the project and determined that no traffic signals are warranted. These drawings are conceptual, and improvements will be developed in accordance with both County Transportation Division requirements and Caltrans requirements. Water to the site will be provided by Ventura County Water Works District Number 19. The applicant is responsible for installing the infrastructure required to tie into District 19 supply lines, and the proposed supply line will be located under the center line of Bell Ranch Eastern Access Road shown here. The following are a series of elevations of some of the proposed structures. The design style can be classified as Spanish Colonial and has been found to be consistent with the architectural style of the surrounding unincorporated community, including the City of Camarillo's community design element. The proposed buildings will be painted off-white with red tile roofs to further match the style of the existing community. The proposed project is designed to cluster the buildings in the center of the project site. Landscaping, parking, and community areas surround the development, and a 29-foot-wide landscape buffer screens the site from existing agricultural lands on the subject property and on adjacent properties. The proposed landscaping includes approximately 280,000 square feet of landscaping, including the planting of roughly 130 trees. The plant palette includes plant material and trees known to thrive in the local climate and soil conditions, and includes species that, once established, will require low water consumption. A full buildout, the project will contain approximately 1.44 acres of onsite recreational amenities, which include community centers, gardens, bike paths, tot lots, playgrounds, open space, and basketball courts. Planning staff conducted an initial review of the project and identified that the project had the potential to result in potentially significant adverse impacts to the environment. As a result, an EIR was prepared to evaluate the full extent of these impacts. Notice of preparation was prepared on April 7, followed by a public scoping meeting held on April 22. The draft EIR was circulated for public comments from September 21 to November 5, 2020. During this time, a total of 22 comments were received, and all comments were addressed and included in the final EIR, which was distributed for public review on January 6 of this year. The EIR identified the following areas as potentially significant impact areas. The final EIR identified two significant yet mitigable impacts to air quality and biological resources. The loss of agricultural soils was identified as a significant and unavoidable, unavoidable impact to which there is no feasible mitigation. Because of this, staff has prepared a statement of overriding considerations, which are included as Exhibit 7 of your staff report. These overrides include the need for affordable housing in the county and the consequential support this project would have to the regional agricultural industry. As I mentioned, the project site has a general plan land use designation of agricultural. The purpose of the ag designation is to promote economic vitality and environmental sustainability by conserving land and soils while supporting the agricultural industry, including for farmworker housing. The proposed project is consistent with this designation as it includes the construction of a farmworker housing complex, which will serve the needs of Ventura County agricultural operation. Staff's full general plan consistency analysis can be found as Exhibit 9 of your staff report. The property is zoned AE 40 acres and is adjacent to but located outside of the City of Camarillo city limits and the city's sphere of influence. As such, the parcel is able to be subdivided into parcels less than the prescribed 40-acre lot area for the construction of the farmworker housing complex. The proposed development will be cited entirely on parcels one, two, and three, and parcel four, which will remain in active commercial crop production, is approximately 18 acres in size. Section E of your staff report details the project's compliance with all applicable zoning ordinance requirements. As discussed in Section C of the staff report, the proposed project classifies as an affordable housing development. Article 16 of the noncoastal zoning ordinance requires that the county to provide development incentives and waivers of development standards for affordable housing projects similar to this. The proposed project includes two incentives for an increase in building lot coverage from the allowable 5% to the proposed 25%, and a reduction in side yard setbacks from the allowable 15 feet to the proposed 10 feet. The project, the proposed project also includes a waiver of covered parking requirements for multifamily dwelling units. To limit the development and use of the subject property to agricultural operations, farmworker housing, and related uses as described in the project description, the farm, the project has been conditioned to require the applicant to report a deed restriction on the property's title. This deed would restrict development and uses to that approved as part of the subject project. The project will also be conditioned to require it to be managed by an affordable housing provider who will be responsible for verifying that residents meet the qualifications of MCZO requirements initially and annually. The housing provider will also be required to submit an annual farmworker verification forms in accordance with NCZO Section 8107-41.2. The purpose of the Ventura County Save Open Space and Agricultural Resources Initiative is to protect, to protect open space and agricultural land by requiring a majority vote of residents before those areas can be re-designated or rezoned for development. As stated, the proposed project is consistent with both general plan and noncoastal zoning ordinance requirements, and the project does not require a general plan amendment for re-designation or zone change. Therefore, this project is consistent with all applicable SOAR initiatives. Additionally, the Section 1 of J of SOAR identifies that farmworker housing is a use that is consistent with the agricultural designation. The staff's recommended actions are included in Section J of the staff report, and we ask that your commission take into consideration all testimony and evidence provided here today. I'd like to add at this time that we have staff members from County Environmental Health Division, Public Works Transportation Agency Division, Watershed Protection Division, Ventura Regional Sanitation District, and we have a robust applicant team should your commission have any specific questions related to any of the items discussed here. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions that your commission may have.
Any questions by the Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Duquesne?
Again, if I could just- Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I am wondering if on the, in all phases of the parking, do the, does this project comply with the standards that we adopted just earlier last year?
The updated parking standards, Commissioner Duquesne?
They had to do with landscaping in, in parking areas? I'm asking if it is, if it comports with the new standards that were adopted?
If you're referring to the general plan policy that talks about tree planting in parking, is that what you're referring to? The general plan policies?
Last, last month, the Planning Commission recommended that we have new standards that would support native plants and pallets of plants, and I'm wondering if this project comports with those new standards?
Commissioner Duquesne, this is Plan Director Ward. That ordinance is not yet effective. We are going to the Board of Supervisors during March to get it adopted. So those regulations are not yet in effect.
I see. And further with parking, is it my understanding that there will be no covered parking in any phase of this project?
Commissioner Duquesne, they had asked for, requested a waiver, which is a Planning Director decision. And we have determined that we are granting that waiver for covered parking. They do have, they are exceeding, they are in exceedance of their parking standard requirements. They also have additional bike storage and handicap parking and the like, but they are in exceedance of their, their, their parking requirements, and we have granted them a waiver at the discretion of the Planning Director.
Is it something that the Planning Commission could weigh in on?
I'd have to defer to council for that question.
It is something that they could weigh in on, but Justin, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the, the parking provision waiver was one of the concessions that the applicant requested under the Housing Accountability Act, or the, another state law?
I think this is Plan Director Ward. I think this is part of the, the density bonus-
The density bonus, right.
Which does allows for separate waiver application, a request. Our ability to deny one of those waivers or a density bonus concession is only if there's a public health and safety finding that we can make by not granting it. So it's a very high bar to deny such a request. Both the density bonus provision and waiver provisions are all about trying to achieve affordable housing and part of the economic implications that go- affordable housing and part of the economic implications that go along with building affordable housing.
Okay, I hear that, and I respect that, but this is my thinking, that if half of the parking were covered, then those residents who have sedans with, say, car seats in them would be shaded and therefore safer to put little children into. The idea of having units with multiple bedrooms leads me to believe that families would be living here, and families have children, and children get loaded into cars with car seats that can get really hot. So the fact that they have no covered parking, I thought, well, what if they just had, you know, a certain proportion, say 50% of the, of the units have covered parking? You know, certainly, you know, if you have a great big truck, it's hard to, it's hard to park, you know, it's, it's, it's challenging, and it might be better to have no covered parking for, you know, people who use trucks for transportation. But for sedans and, you know, family, family cars with small children, I think that it would be something that would protect health and safety because it's, it's cooler.
Good morning. This is Francesca Verdean with County Council, and I just wanted to chime in here and kind of reiterate, reiterate some of the, the points that Director Ward made. He's correct that the standard is pretty high in, in terms of our ability to deny a waiver under the density bonus law. Essentially, we, we would only be able to deny it if there was a specific adverse impact as defined in the statute. And specific adverse impact is defined as a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified, written, public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date that the application was deemed complete. So I think it would be challenging to deny the waiver on that basis.
I hear that, and that seems like a, a shortcoming of the law, and perhaps people didn't think things through with regard to having no option for covered parking for families with small children that utilize car seats. That's all I have to say about it.
Okay. I don't want to jump on other commissioners, but if I could just comment there, because I think Commissioner Adukas raises reasonable points. However, my thinking is that the landscaping plan requires a certain amount of trees that will provide shade. Now, initially, they're never big enough to provide enough shade. Eventually, they will, but I think that passive cooling mitigates against some of those concerns. And it's also maybe a good time, I think, Council did a good job of bringing up how the Housing Accountability Act interplays here. But having seen a project in the community of Seamy Valley run right up against the state, I wonder if Council could explain the implications or the enforcement ability of the state if we were to not give due deference to the Housing Accountability Act? I don't know if Francesca or Jeff wants to handle that.
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll...
Sure.
Oh, Francesca, go ahead, sorry to cut you off.
Oh, that's okay, I was just, and certainly feel free to, to chime in here as well, Jeff. But I was just going to state that, you know, the Housing Accountability Act, you know, is really prompted by concerns regarding the shortage of housing in California, and has been amended over the years to basically, you know, further limit the discretion of local agencies to deny housing development projects that meet specified criteria. And it, it has also been amended to also strengthen the, some of the enforcement mechanisms that are available and, and given a bit more teeth as well in terms of, of, of the time, type of enforcement action that can be taken by the state, the ability of, of applicants to file lawsuits and obtain attorney's fees when they're, if, if they are found to have, have been unjustifiably denied a waiver or an incentive. So there, there is, there is some liability there, and, and the statute very clearly kind of limits the discretion that a local agency has to deny a housing development project, such as, such as the project that's before your, your commission today, that, that is found to have, to have essentially met all of the objective, general plan, zoning, and subdivision standards and criteria that were in effect when the application was deemed complete. And so some of that is explained in the staff report, just the, the findings that would be required to deny the project.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Adukas?
I have one last question for staff. Were there any comments? I didn't see any, but were there any comments from the SOAR organization regarding the interpretation of staff's conclusion in the EIR?
Commissioner Adukas, we did receive a few comments early in the, in the EIR phase. Those were addressed in the final EIR, and we did not receive any comments related to SOAR for this public hearing.
I'm just, I understand some people thought that this might have been subject to SOAR, but did we get anything from the SOAR organization itself?
Not, no, we did not, Commissioner Adukas. We received comments related to SOAR from community member, community members, but not from any SOAR group.
Okay, so the assumption is that the staff's interpretation of this project's applicability or limitation, saying going to a vote of the people, does not apply?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from commissioners? Commissioner McVale?
Yeah. I'll save most of my remarks for later, but can you tell me, I should have done it myself, but can you tell me the total number of parking spaces when all three phases are built out?
I believe there are 657, but I can confirm, and we can get back to you shortly on that.
No, that, that's fine, because I read somewhere where they're talking about 900-plus vehicles in the, in the facility, which means close to 300 vehicles will not have any parking, or did I misread the 900 vehicles plus entering and exiting the proposed project area?
I'm not sure what you're referencing there, Commissioner McVale, but they are in exceedance of their parking requirements per zoning ordinance. But we can definitely find that number, that specific figure out for you and get back to you shortly.
And Commissioner McVale, that may be a question the applicant, when their presentation can try to answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I can't see Commissioner White. Did you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Chair King, thank you. It's a question for Justin. I want to say at the outset that I'm, at the onset, that I'm in support of this project in general. I do have a concern. Is there a way to put up on the screen the page from the environmental impact report?
Mindy, are you able to?
One of us can do that. Commissioner White, what page are you seeking?
4.7-3 has to do with 2040 general plan elements, policies from the 2040 general plan that we worked on.
Okay.
Related to circulation, transportation, and mobility.
Give us a minute, do you want to address another question while we pull that up?
I can read too, I can read it because I have it in front of me. Do you want me to do that? Would that be easier?
Just one minute, we're getting, we're getting it up.
Okay, great. I'll be patient. Okay, the, the, it says there, under circulation, transportation, mobility element, the following policies from the draft Ventura County 2040 general plan are applicable to the proposed project. By the way, this should be revised to eliminate draft Ventura County general plan, since the, the county general plan is now final, I believe. If you could go down three pages to the very last policy of CTM, which is on page 4.7-6. I know that we, we spent a lot of time in developing the county general plan to incorporate policies and programs that address climate change. Tomorrow, I am going to be attending the first meeting of the county's Climate Emergency Council. Climate is an emergency in Ventura County and for the planet. And in the general plan are, are many policies and programs that address climate change. The last policy there, CTM 6.5, says electric vehicle charging stations. The county shall support the installation of electric vehicle charging stations where feasible at county facilities, parking lots, park and ride lots, truck stops, and new The first, the first page of, that was put up there says the following policies are applicable. I believe that EV charging stations certainly should be a part of this project, yet I don't see it anywhere in either the project description or discussed in the EIR. Justin, Director Ward, could you please comment on that? If it's not in there somewhere, I will be proposing a, a proposed condition for this project that would add that. Could you tell me if it's in there?
Commissioner White, that policy is not in the analysis. It is not a policy that is required as part of this project, but it is something that may be applied. It's at the discretion of, if, if, if that policy is feasible for the applicant to, to make that happen. They don't, they did not include the request in the project description for the installation of any electric vehicle charging station, so we did not do that analysis. But the county absolutely supports the installation of these, these charging stations, but we did not include it in our, in our analysis because it's not one of the required policies.
Could I ask County Council, please, could, could the planning commission vote to add a condition to this project that, that requires the installation of an appropriate number of vehicle charging stations?
The, the planning commission could make that recommendation. We would have to analyze whether the condition could be imposed in accordance with state housing law, the, the State Housing Accountability Act, and the, the density bonus law that was described before. But there, there would be nothing legally to prevent your planning commission from making that recommendation. Of course, we, we should hear from the applicant with regard to that issue before any action is taken. But I, I guess just to, to be crystal clear, I, we haven't researched whether the county could ultimately legally impose that condition. All I'm saying is that it's, it's fine to discuss it and to recommend it if that's your will, but it would be subject to County Council research as to its legality in terms of ultimately being imposed.
Great, thank you very much. That's, that's the question I have. Chair King?
Thank you. Any other commissioners wanting to weigh in here? I'm seeing nothing, I just have one comment that maybe tags along with Commissioner White. On a fertile line, it says somewhere in the thousand pages of documents I read, that the project includes connections for solar. But as I understand it, the project does not call initially for the installation of photovoltaic panels on the project, is that correct?
Chair King, that's correct. However, the building code, the recent building code that was adopted and became effective on January 1st of 2020, requires that all new building for residential development includes the use of photovoltaic systems for energy production. So they will be required to install solar panels at the building, at the building design phase.
And the reason I bring it up, and the reason I think it connects with Commissioner White's ideas, is that I understand it's hard enough to build farmworker housing, and even harder to build low-income farmworker housing, given the way our permitting and fee structure is designed, and that in order to make this project economically feasible, some things just aren't possible, they just don't pencil out. However, while we couldn't require it, it seems to me that we might be able to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they explore possibilities for they and their staff to partner with SOMA's partners to, to explore grant funding, any sort of external funding for environmental issues that maybe hasn't been explored because they're so busy trying to find funding just for the basic project. And it seems to me that that funding could address things like solar panels, it could address things like charging stations, it might even provide an option that solar panels could be erected over parking spaces to provide shade. So it seems like it might be a win-win if, and I know, you know, I remember when now mayor, former supervisor, Zaragoza, worked very hard to bring outside resources to issues in the community of Oxnard and around his district. And it looks like it would be a great opportunity to invest a little bit of community capital to make this project even better than I think it is now. And that's, you know, I'll, I'll lay that out for the applicant to address it if he or she chooses. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none. I'll now open the public hearing. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Yes, we do.
Tanner.
Are we ready? Are we ready for that? Yeah. Good morning, planning commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Lisa Woodburn. I'm the Vice President of Planning Services at Jensen Design and Survey. And I would like to start this morning by thanking Justin and Mindy for all their hard work on this project. We sincerely appreciate it and we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for them. I'm excited to be here today representing our client team. We have worked diligently over the past two years on a project that will provide decent, affordable housing to the farmworkers of Ventura County. This property meets the very narrow specifications of the county zoning ordinance for the development of farmworker housing complexes. The land is designated A E and it's adjacent to the city of Camarillo city limits. We are extremely proud of this project. The beautiful Spanish colonial architecture conforms with the city of Camarillo design standards. Six different residential building types are proposed. Building types A through C and E through F can best be described as three-story apartment buildings, each containing twelve to twenty-four dwelling units. Building type D is a two-story quadplex. Additional residential units will also be located on the second story of the community center buildings. Each building includes a mixture of one, two and three bedroom units to accommodate a variety of farmworker family sizes. Each unit will have either a private patio or a balcony. There's a dedicated mudroom and indoor bike lockers on the first floor of each building to secure bike storage. Thirty-five percent of the project will be landscaped. The community is surrounded by landscaping on the west and the east perimeter, which serves as a buffer between the community and the surrounding agricultural operations. It is important to us that onsite park and recreation, recreation amenities are included in the project. Provided onsite are multiple play yards, a basketball court, tot lots, two community centers and a community garden. Landscaped internal pathways will provide pedestrian circulation to residential buildings and community amenities within the site. As Justin mentioned, there will be two roads providing access to the site from Somus Road. The primary access will be shared with the city of Camarillo's De Salter Park. The second access will be further north near the existing Bell Ranch access road, which will be improved for this project. Both the roads and the entrances into the project will be constructed to county of Ventura and Caltrans standards and to the recommendations of the project's traffic study regarding right and left turn stacking requirements. Domestic water will be provided by the county Water Works District nineteen. This slide illustrates the additional water main that will be constructed to bring the water from the current water line in Somus Road to onsite. Once onsite, the water line will be looped to meet water pressure requirements. As part of the water well service process, the project will be contributing fees to Water Works District nineteen that will be allocated to purchase additional water and will also be used to provide additional water storage. Wastewater will be processed in a community wastewater treatment plant. The effluent will be separated into solids. Oil will be separated and the solids will go to a large storage tank for removal to an offsite disposal facility licensed to accept this type of waste. The wastewater treatment plant also produces high quality tertiary treated recycled water. There is a seepage pit dispersal system located along the westerly edge of the project that is sized to take a hundred percent of the recycled water generated by the wastewater treatment plant. However, this leads to a discussion of another benefit of the project, the availability of high quality recycled water. While not part of this project, we've been in discussions with neighboring farmers. There's an interest in purchasing the recycled water for blending with the current well water that's used for irrigation that is extremely high in salts. The blended irrigation water will be a benefit to the production and quality of the neighboring avocado orchards. About a decade ago, city of Simi Valley started discharging salty water into the Cayaguas Creek and that has impacted this groundwater basin. From two thousand ten to two thousand fourteen, the adjacent avocado orchard produced about nine hundred thousand pounds of avocados a year. However, since two thousand fifteen, the average annual production has only been about four hundred and twenty-five thousand pounds a year. Blending of the high quality recycled water with the well water could bring avocado production back to pre-two thousand fifteen levels. We think this increase in avocado production will help offset the loss of egg soils. Ventura County Regional Sanitation District will operate and maintain the community wastewater treatment plant. As part of the operation of the wastewater treatment plant, V R S D will monitor the quality of the recycled water to ensure that it meets the state regional water quality control board standards. If the recycled water is used for offsite irrigation and it does not meet the necessary quality standards or during rain events when ag irrigation is not necessary, the recycled water will be disposed of in a seepage pit dispersal system. The farmworker housing complex will be constructed and managed by AmCal. I would, at this time, like to introduce Patrick Shanahan from AmCal who will present an overview of their experience constructing and managing farmworker housing projects throughout California.
Good morning. I'm Patrick Shanahan with AmCal. Along with me today from AmCal are Darren Hanson and Alex Bratt. Thank you for allowing us an opportunity to introduce our company and share with you our experience in affordable housing and specialty housing. We also have Curtis Tambuga with F P I Management Company with us today. F P I operates AmCal properties and we have a long and successful history with them. First, a little bit about AmCal. AmCal was founded in nineteen seventy-eight and has been a top-notch developer for over forty-two years. AmCal only does housing. The focus only in rental housing across the three major areas of affordable housing, market rate housing and purpose-built student housing. To date, we have produced ten thousand apartments across ninety different communities. California is our home and we have a very active and growing pipeline in Texas. AmCal also recently expanded into Washington where we've completed our first community in the Puget Sound area. We're headquartered in Agora Hills with offices in West L A and an office just outside of Dallas, Texas. Next slide, please. Here are a couple of the key strengths from AmCal that highlight what we bring to developments. As I mentioned before, California is our home and specifically Southern and coastal California. We have extensive relationships with financing partners, consultants, subcontractors, all of the major players and team members in a development deal who know and trust AmCal. That allows us to consistently get the best terms and deals from these partners, which is especially important in times of economic uncertainty. Second, we're a vertically integrated company with all of the major development functions in-house at the company. This structure provides a strong foundation in teams and an ability to really get things done in crunch time when it's pivotal to get projects completed on time. We are experts with affordable housing development and construction. We've completed numerous beautiful affordable communities across the area. Our completed projects improve the community as a whole, create a new and exciting place for people to live and work. It takes a lot of expertise and experience to do these projects correctly. And I'd also like to highlight sustainable construction is a key tenant in how AmCal approaches design and construction of projects with, if it comes to renewable energy, E V charters. We're comfortable with doing everything that's required to really help advance the goals of preventing climate change and reducing greenhouse gas consumption. We are long-term holders of affordable communities owning and operating them for twenty-plus years and beyond. And finally, we have extensive knowledge in specialty housing that targets specific populations. The knowledge required for financing, operating and maintaining compliance requires a strict corporate discipline that AmCal has developed over the number of years. As an example, our Veterans Park project in Pomona, which is a community reserved for veterans, is an example of this type of specialty housing. We've engaged with the V A and a number of veteran organizations around the area to advertise and communicate with local vets about the opportunity for new and secure housing in their community. And we maintain these relationships to ensure we have a strong, stable community for the foreseeable future. Next slide. Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, California is our home. Over the past five years, we've developed over eleven hundred new affordable units that have targeted a number of special populations as well as working families. In all of our projects, we conduct extensive outreach during the LEASUP program to ensure we reach the targeted populations. We look at building relationships in the community to establish a long-term presence in the community. For example, on the Somus Ranch project, we would plan to coordinate with a number of the local farmworker advocacy groups as well as the county's Farmworker Resource Program to ensure we capture local farmworkers who live and work in the community. And finally, we maintain the highest occupancy in our properties. We recognize the value these developments bring to the local area and the investment made by a number of agencies and ensure we deliver those benefits to the community. One of the great amenities our communities offer that we'd like to share with you is the resident services we deliver in all of our properties. These services are provided free of charge to everyone who lives there. There's a long list of what we can offer, but some examples that you can see on the slide are after-school programs, E S L and adult ed classes, arts and crafts, book clubs, resident training, financial planning, health fairs. To be really impactful, we tailor our services to the needs of the community residents. We conduct surveys to determine the needs and the desires of the community and deliver what's needed. And when the needs change based up on follow-up surveys and dialogue with the community members, we adjust to ensure that our services provide the maximum positive impact to all of the residents. And now I'd like to turn it over to Curtis with F P I to introduce his company and talk about our collective approach to property management.
Good morning, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Curtis Tambaga. I'm the Vice President of Affordable Communities for F P I Management. Brief history of F P I. We are a fifty-year-old company. Originally started as a developer of HUD projects, now exclusively a third-party fee management provider based out of California. We have over a hundred and twenty thousand units we manage within seventeen states. But focused in on our affordable portfolio, we have forty-eight thousand affordable apartment homes, which makes us the number one largest affordable operator within the country. We've actually worked and partnered with AmCal for just over thirteen years and currently manage forty of their communities. So we've got a long and successful history of working with them and I think part of that is not only the beauty of their projects, but also their focus on sustaining long-term affordable housing and quality housing. F P I as an operator brings strong managerial expertise within a wide variety of programs. Those include also farmworkers and R D programs. We've fostered successful relationships through inter-agency communications, daily coordination with tenants, social service providers to provide a consistent and ongoing excellence within the community and a sense of community. We have established low barrier tenant selection criterias to maximize those housing opportunities available. And we also have high rates of housing retention throughout our communities. So when we're looking at long-term projects and sustainability within the community itself and the community at large that we operate and manage within.
Thank you, Curtis. There's an overwhelming need for decent, affordable farmworker housing in Ventura County. Stephanie Williams of Ranney Planning Management is here to discuss the findings of her research conducted on the need for farmworker housing in Ventura County. Stephanie?
Hi, sorry, I was trying to unmute. Good morning. Thank you for letting us participate and speak to the need for the worker housing in the Somus area as well as, you know, the greater Ventura area as a, as a whole. What we found when we wrote the market study back in November was that there there's approximately a need for almost three thousand farmworker units in the greater Somus area, which includes parts of Oxnard. We also found that farmworker housing, there is no farmworker designated housing near the Somus area. Closest would be in the Oxnard portion of the county. And they all have weightless and extensive need. So we believe that they would come from that area out to a brand-new newly-built farmworker designated project. The market study only spoke to the first phase, however, given there's only there's a demand for two thousand nine hundred units and total build-out would be about three hundred and sixty units. We believe that there is enough need for the full project. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. And I would like to now introduce Barbara Macri Ortiz. She's our attorney and longtime advocate for farmworkers. She's here today to discuss why approval of this project is so important. Barbara?
Thank you very much, Lisa. My name is Barbara Macri Ortiz and I've been doing affordable housing and farmworker housing since nineteen ninety in Ventura County. Good morning to you and we're very excited to be here. This is a very exciting project. You know, the thought of delivering three hundred and sixty units of farmworker housing is pretty incredible to me because I've been working, what, for thirty years? And I don't think we've delivered much more than that over thirty years through about twelve or fifteen projects. So this is, this is a big deal. You know, there, there can be no debate as to the desperate need for decent, safe and sanitary housing for our farmworker population. The COVID pandemic has certainly illustrated the fact that farmworkers are among the most essential workers in our community. Their labor continues to feed our nation during this pandemic. The pandemic has also laid bare the cruel reality that the current overcrowded housing conditions for many farmworkers in our county has contributed to the spread of COVID, placing another unfair burden on these essential workers. Severe overcrowding makes it impossible for families to practice recommended public health protocols since many homes are occupied by two, three or even four families. Farmer communities living in Oxnard, Santa Paula and Fillmore have borne the brunt of COVID in Ventura County. This project has been a long time coming. I have been working with county leaders and farmworker housing advocates since, since two thousand and one to address zoning impediments to the construction of farmworker housing in the unincorporated area. It took over eleven years for the county to amend its subdivision ordinance to allow for a ten-acre remainder parcel in connection with the development of a farmworker housing complex. And that was huge because the forty acre size of parcels made it practically impossible to be able to come up with a project that would actually pencil. You know, also there has been a particular daunting challenge to locate appropriate sites for farmworker housing complexes. We're looking for a needle in a haystack. That is why this project is a first. This is actually the first project under this farmworker housing complex ordinance. We are so lucky that the Somus Ranch site fits within the county's limitations under both its zoning ordinance and under SOAR. In fact, when SOAR was up for renewal in two thousand and eighteen, language was specifically included in the SOAR ordinance to allow for the development of farmworker housing complexes consistent with the county ordinance. So after a long road, we are finally here before you looking for your affirmative recommendations. Hopefully you will agree that the project and related actions are worthy of recommended approval and that now is a perfect time to deliver a project that will meet the housing needs of three hundred and sixty farmworker families. We owe it to the thousands of farmworkers who toil in the fields in Ventura County to rise to this challenge. I would like to address a couple of the questions of the commissioners that came up during your discussion. First, Commissioner DeCaucus, the new standards for parking that First, Commissioner Dukakis, the new standards for parking that are the uncovered parking, that is a, under Density Bonus Law, Section P5, it specifically allows for uncovered parking. So that's not even one where there's to be a finding, a finding can be made, it's specifically authorized. But with respect to the real issue that you raised, Commissioner, I agree. You know, most farmworkers now are parking their cars where there's no covered parking. And one thing that is typically done is you have a blanket in your backseat, and when you take those kids out of the car, you put that blanket there, so that if they have to come in when it's hot, that blanket protects against having a really hot or burning seat. Commissioner McPhail, it's good to see you again. I know you were one working together with us back in the day when we were trying to get appropriate zoning for these complexes. So it's good to see you. With respect to the parking, I couldn't find anything related to 900 cars. There is 635 spaces and 379 bicycle spaces. But I think the one thing that's exciting to me about this particular project is we have the van, the farmworker van program, and with a number of, you know, this bigger complex group of workers, we're going to be able to see farmworkers using the van pool to get to work, which will not only minimize the cars in the complex, but it's also going to minimize the number of cars on the road. So it's a really exciting opportunity there, and this is a perfect place for that. Commissioner White, with respect to the electric charging, I think that is a great program. Maybe not right now for farmworkers, there aren't a whole lot of farmworkers that have electric vehicles, but that is certainly something to go forward, and I love the idea of looking at grant funding for that, and also for the solar, if it's possible to make those, you know, additions. And I think what we're looking at is we're looking at a company that wants to do the best. And so, you know, you have a limited amount of money. What you see is what's feasible, based on the performance now and where money can be had, but obviously, if we're able to work with the county and get grant funding for additional things, that's a benefit to the tenants and to everybody and to the county. So in closing, I'm just really, really excited to be here. I look forward to answering any questions you may have, and I'm excited to finally, after 20 years, to actually get a project that makes a significant impact on the desperate need for farmworker housing in our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Our next slide is just to show you the names and people here on our team that are available today to answer any questions that you might have. Our architect is here to discuss any questions you might have about architecture, landscape architecture. You already heard from Patrick and Curtis from the AlCam, I'm sorry, AmCal team. Richard Jones is available if you have any questions about the wastewater treatment plant. Also available is Chris Nally, and he is with the producer of the plant, so if you have any technical questions, he can answer those questions. So in conclusion, we want to end our presentation by requesting that you support staff's recommended actions provided in your staff report, and you recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they take the actions necessary to approve this important, much-needed project in Ventura County. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, I was going to ask, any commissioners have questions? And Commissioner Dukus, you're always first with the hand, and then after you, Commissioner McPhail.
Thank you. I'm not sure who to direct this to, perhaps the architect. I was wondering if there are shared laundry facilities, or whether they're in-unit in any of these, and if there are clotheslines available to have passive drying of clothing.
Dede, are you available to answer that question? Mindy might be in one of the...
Thank you, Lisa. This is Fog. Yes, let me bring that person forward. All right, bringing forward Det leave just now. Det leave, you should be able to unmute yourself.
I'm wondering if you could repeat the question, just to make sure that I can appropriately answer it.
Yes. I was wondering if laundry facilities are in-unit or whether they're shared, and if there are clotheslines available for passive drying of clothing, or whether people will have clotheslines on those balconies, and if there's something that's better.
Yeah, first of all, I can, the issue of clotheslines for individual units, as you see, each of the units do have either a ground-level patio, covered patio, or a balcony, and certainly, individual families can, you know, put up a clothesline on that balcony area for, you know, drying of clothes, you know, that are immediately needed, or, you know, where laundry facilities are not available. I'm going to have to defer the question of, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So are laundry, is it laundry in-unit, or are they shared laundry facilities?
If you can give me a moment just to make certain that I'm answering that question correctly, I want to just reach out to the project architect to make sure that I have a clear understanding of that. So I will defer, if you give me a moment to answer that question, I will get right back on that. While I'm waiting for...
Instead of all of us waiting, let me move on to a different question, if I may. Chair King, can I ask a different question?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. And again, you know, I just want to emphasize that I'm interested in decent housing for farmworkers, too. I'm interested in where the kids will go to school, and whether they're, if it's, if children will be able to walk to school safely?
They will be going to Somas, Somas School, the elementary up through eighth grade, and then, high school students will be going to Oxnard Unified School District in Camrail. There is a bus, there will be a bus turnout onsite for the elementary school, the kids going to the Somas School. And it will, you know, so the school bus will come onsite, pick the kids up, take them to school, and then bring them back and drop them off on the site at the end of the school day.
So there's no walking to the school that will be, that's next door?
Oh, there, that would be, I'm sorry, that's part of the high school. If kids go to high school, yes, there would be a path available for the kids to get to the high school, but, you know, that school is a magnet school. It's not necessarily the school that all the kids in the, in the complex will be going to, but if they do go to that school, they will be able to walk.
Oh, so it's not a public school?
It is a public school as part of the Oxnard Unified School District, but it's a magnet school. You have to apply specifically. It's not like for, just for the neighborhood residents.
I see. So other children will be bused?
Yes, elementary school children will be bused.
Okay.
And I can jump in on the question about the laundry facilities. Each unit will have its own individual laundry equipment in the unit.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. And while I'm on, I might just offer some information with regard to your earlier question about EV stations, electric vehicle charging stations. The California Green Code requires that 10% of all the parking spaces be EV-ready, in the sense that the facilities, the electric wiring and everything is in place for future installation of those facilities as the demand, you know, becomes apparent. So 10% of all those spaces will be ready.
And my, and my last question has to do with the maturity of trees, and I don't know whether this should be directed to Woodburn or a landscape architect. It's the size of those trees and the shade that they're expected to provide?
That's a question I can't answer at this point, because we're still...
Right, I was directing it to Ms. Woodburn.
And actually, I was going to ask Dede to respond to that, because he's here representing the landscape architect as well.
Okay.
Right. I mean, again, is this a function of cost and budget? At this point, we haven't gotten into the full technical working drawings for the project, and as we develop those drawings and, you know, go further with our developing the cost budgets and all of that, we'll be able to determine that. But, you know, typically...
I have an observation I made. With the beautiful renderings and the photographs of the different types of apartments that have been constructed, what I noticed was the plant type, which is a crepe myrtle that is very slow-growing and doesn't, doesn't provide a lot of shade. I'm just wondering what palette of plants, you know, there's, there's people who hate to park under trees, because it messes up their car. So I'm just concerned about a large area of asphalt that gets, you know, really hot, and we're expecting to get even hotter as the years go forward, and I'm interested in, you know, providing more, as decent housing as we possibly can. Giving nod to Barbara Macri Ortiz is pointing out of the reality of what farmworkers are dealing with right now. But as much as we possibly can, that we provide housing that's just as decent as we would want for ourselves.
Yeah, I can, I would add to that, that with your recommendation, we'll certainly work with staff as we develop the detailed plans to address concerns that you may have about the plant palette that's been proposed, and we'll work with staff to achieve, you know, the result that is, is desired ultimately.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
Anything else, Commissioner Dukus, before I passage the floor around? Okay, I think Commissioner White was next, and then we'll get to Commissioner McPhail.
I, I will wait until we're in deliberations for further comment.
Thank you, Mr. White. Commissioner McPhail?
Yeah, Barbara, it was good to see and hear from you also. I just have a curiosity question. On the three-story units, is there any thought to elevators in those three-story units?
No. These buildings are what would be described as three-story walk-up. However, your, your question concerns accessibility, I'm assuming, and as you know, a third of all these units are going to be accessible at the ground level. So, you know, when taken into consideration the percentage of the population that requires units that are accessible, we would have way more than what would ever be needed, whatever the demand would be in a project of this nature. It's not a senior housing project, for example. If it were, then elevators would certainly be a consideration, but it would be infeasible to have elevators in each of these buildings the way they are distributed on the site economically. But I can assure you that there will be more than required, certainly more than the required number of accessible units available as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Strollers.
Commissioner Dukus.
Strollers, just pointing out that, like, the need is not just for ADA, it's, it's practical.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners? Okay, I have one question for Mr. Shanahan, if he's still available. Are you there, Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Okay. I was impressed with the long list of competencies of your firm, and the fact that it's vertically integrated, and I noticed that one of the things that you provide is funding advice. I'm wondering if your firm has any experience in identifying sources of sustainability funding that would be helpful if we were to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they explore any options for partnership to improve the sustainability of this project?
Well, let me first start by answering that. In all of our affordable developments, we have extensive relationships with local governments, cities and counties that, you know, include financial relationships and, you know, partnerships with them to explore financing. So we have plenty of experience on doing that, and we quite frequently do that. So that's, that's well within our capabilities on a project like this.
Okay. Have you done any sustainability funding identification?
Alex or Darren, do you have any that come to mind?
Because, am I unmuted? Oh, great, perfect. This is Alex Pratt. Yes, we have done some with projects. Again, there's a sustainability element to many of the projects that we're in. We haven't done a lot of separate grant funding, although, as I think you mentioned earlier, we've done, you know, gone out and gotten funding for solar, where we've gotten various grants. And I actually haven't participated in one where, I think there are some EPA grants for some environmental sustainability issues, and so that's one of the things that we could consider and looked at in another project.
Okay, well, so you wouldn't have any trouble if the commission made a recommendation to the board that they explore working with you to identify funding sources for additional sustainability elements of the project?
Absolutely not. And I just think that, I think the thing that we have to be careful about is, you know, because we've always got a cost element to these projects, to just be conscious of the dynamic of, you know, we're going out and we're competing for financing at the state level. And, and part of that has to do with the actual efficiency of the project we're building and its cost. And so we're always weighing a balance of those things. But again, the state itself has a focus on doing sustainable developments and has some incentives in that regard. So we would definitely work with you to look at those issues.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Any other commissioners have any other questions? Now we're coming to public comments. Only members of the public who pre-register through the Planning Division website will be able to provide their comments via Zoom. Do we have any speakers? will be able to provide their comments via Zoom. Do we have any speakers?
Chair King, I have 14 speakers via Zoom, and currently I have three comments by email.
Okay, let's take the speakers first and then the email comments. And then if we have a delay in getting the speakers up, we can sneak in the, the comments. How does that sound to everybody?
That sounds great. If it's.
Wait your head.
I'll just announce the speaker. Did that work for you? I'll go ahead and announce the speaker, and as I announce them, they'll be unmuted. And then.
Okay.
Did you want to say anything else to the speakers? Or do you want me to start? Good?
No, and, and you might be ready to put up the slide on how folks can email us. Maybe stick it up just one time before we get started on speaking.
Sure, I'll go ahead and do that right now. Hold on a second. I have to find it. Yes, I can't find it.
Go ahead.
Why can't I?
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. I have it. I just. Okay, so I'm just gonna go ahead and read it for everyone. Please email your comments of 250 words or less to planning.pcc Please indicate in the subject line. This is for agenda item number seven. Staff will read your comments to the Planning Commission, and the chair will announce the final time period to receive any comments. Thank you. All right. So our first speaker is Patrick Richards.
Uh, Mr. Richard, you have the floor.
Is he in?
Mr. Richards?
I don't have him.
Are you gonna unmute me or?
There, you're.
Hello?
Hi, Patrick, we can hear you.
Yes.
Okay, I'll start out then. First of all, I have to make comments with regards to SOAR. I have read the SOAR initiative that was a recent addition, and I do not see that it clearly identifies that farm worker housing is exempt from the SOAR initiative. I'm also disappointed that the SOAR organization has not come forward and given an opinion, one way or the other, as to this fact. The interpretation made by EIR consultant and staff has basically just made that, in fact, an interpretation. So with that, let me move on to my specific comments. Within the final EIR on page 2-58, Table 4.11-2, there is a discussion regarding how the project is not inconsistent with the guidelines for orderly development. In simple language, these guidelines state that urban developments are to be directed to cities. The guidelines state under a title called Policies Within Areas of Interest Where No City Exists. Under second bullet, urban development should only be allowed in unincorporated urban centers or existing communities as designed by the County General Plan. Site is not located in either one of these designations. This brings up the discussion of what constitutes an urban development. Within the Guidelines for Orderly Development, under the definition, there is an identification of what is considered urban development. Under number one of this definition, it states, quote, "It would require the establishment of a new community sewer system or the expansion of an existing community sewer system." Within the project EIR, staff report and the commission's public notice of this meeting today, January 14th, 2021, there is a reference to a condition used permit to allow a community wastewater facility. If this is what is being proposed, is not this CUP for the Community Waste Sewer System inconsistent with the guidelines for early development. I might mention also that the project is proposing 360 residential units, which are nearly half the existing residential units within the Somas community. Also, this project has a density of 20 dwelling units per acre, which also should be considered urban in nature. I would like to bring to the commission's attention another definition found within the county's non-coastal zoning code. And it reads on page 2-21, "On-site waste treatment facilities, a wastewater treatment plant that treats liquid waste, which is generated on the same project site where the plant is located, with the plant and the project site under common ownership. The plants are signed and explicitly restricted to serve only the project site and cannot serve uses off-site or under different ownership. The project proposes to provide recycled water from the proposed community wastewater treatment plant to the adjacent farm for purposes of irrigating and orchard and grow crops. It's unclear as to whether or not there's a financial arrangement, but apparently early on, that was something that was discussed. I would say that the project is inconsistent with the county's non-coastal zoning code definition. I would like to have staff comment on that regard. I move on to conditions of approval of PL 19-0046. First, page six of the 15, Section 2, "Environmental effects found to have no impacts or to have less than significant." Table 1, under Agro-Ressources, soils listed, no impact specific and no cumulative. Section 4 states that there is a significant impact to agriculture. By understanding, project will have a significant impact to agricultural sources as much as project will permanently cover 18-plus acres of prime and state importance. Number 2, Condition Number 17, reporting of major incidents. In my opinion, this condition should also list any major failure of the community wastewater treatment plant. Number 3, Condition Number 18, landscaping and screening. Under Bullet Number 1, should not this also screening of the community waste treatment plant? Number 4, Condition 26, why title this condition as an equity sharing agreement, which is normally associated with a sale of residential units proposed by the project? And also, why is there a reference to years of 55 years of affordability? Is not the project deemed restricted in perpetuity as an affordable farm worker housing project? Also, Condition 65 is missing on the document that was listed on the internet. I have no idea what that condition is all about. Condition 27 on page 23, annual employment verification for farm worker, farm worker housing complex references the non-coastal zoning code section 8107-26.4, annual verification of farm worker, animal caretaker employment. I provided a draft modified farm worker occupancy verification form to the Planning Division back in October 2020. I have not heard anything back from the Planning Division regarding my suggested changes.
Okay, Mr. Richard, if I can interrupt, you've now spoken for more than five minutes. Can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, I need about another minute. The allowable method does not appear to work very well with a determination of valid farm worker. I would like staff to comment with regards to that. I had a comment regarding solar equipment. I think we've already discussed that. The last item that I have is the status of Somas School. Hope the commission is aware that both in front and in the back of the existing Somas facility, there's a high-pressure gas lines. That's one of the reasons, the primary reasons why the school is trying to relocate to another location close by. I won't give the, in fact, the school is going to be limited as to the number of students that they can accept. My last comment is, is ANKEL a nonprofit? Throughout the EIR and staff's report, there's an identification that the project is going to be managed by a nonprofit. That concludes my comments. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Uh, Commissioner Duquesne?
Uh, Mr. Richards, are you still there?
Mr. Richards, are you still there?
I'm unmuting, yes.
Okay, um, I was wondering, um, uh, understanding that your time limit has expired, were there any other things that were left? I read your, your extensive comments and responses to your comments. Were there, were there anything other, were there any other issues that you would like to draw your attention right now?
Well, probably only within the EIR, a review of my comments pertaining to the EIR. I think they're extensive. Hopefully, the commission has had an opportunity to review those.
And we have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Hey, anyone else? I can only see Commissioner Duquesne, so somebody nudge me if you can see somebody else. Okay, hearing none. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Richards. Who's next?
Okay, I have Louis Baker, but I don't believe. He is not present. Okay. So the next speaker I have is Anthony Miller.
Okay. Mr. Miller, are you there?
I believe I am. Are you able to hear me?
You have the floor, sure.
Okay, so my name's Anthony Miller. I'm calling to represent Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District, one of the respondents to the EIR. We sent a letter in regard to the EIR and the proposed project in regard to recreational space and recreational opportunity for the, for the new residents that will be living there. And while the EIR response has essentially stated that any impacts for the, this development would have on the, and the district would be mitigated completely or, or less than, uh, not necessarily mitigated completely, excuse me, but, but would be, uh, manageable or managed through impact fees and things along those lines. We'd like to state that there were a few items that we felt were not, were not adequately addressed. Primarily, the district's parks and the district boundaries abut this project. And the response in the AR to the district's concerns essentially was that they'd be served adequately by other agencies and other facilities in the area or within facilities within the actual development itself. Well, that, I think, is ignoring the, the, the simple fact that there are nine district facilities within a two-and-a-half mile radius, and the nearest county park is greater than five miles away. Additionally, the Somas School site that's referenced in the, in the response to the districts, to the PVRPD concerns, according to the superintendent of Somas Union School District, that is news to him, and that was a direct quote. He has no indication that Somas School District will be building any kind of new park site in relation to this plan or, or development. Which leads us to assume that any organized youth activities, any organized sporting activities, senior services, adult sporting activities, classes, cultural events, and special events will be serviced by Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District. Within the past five years, 15 to 30% of district facility reservations have served Somas residents. And we assume that this is due to the lack of available resources within their own area. This is specifically true for organized recreation such as sports leagues, but I just mentioned. AYSO or American Youth Soccer Organization alone fields teams specifically from Somas, and they are served primarily by district facilities, not by facilities within the Somas area. Now, the district does not have specific roster information. We believe that at least 75 youth from Somas area use PVRPD facilities specifically because our facilities are the only ones available within the immediate area. Notwithstanding the amenities that are actually in the development, that we believe, of course, will be used by those residents, the county has a five-acre-per-thousand-resident limit, or not limit, a standard for recreational space for new development. This development will provide approximately 1.14 acres of recreational space. That is assumed that we will be, that the recreational space will be provided by areas nearby or by the county at some point. But we see no available recourse for Quimby fees through this project to, for the county to use in an area that will actually serve the, the development itself. Furthermore, the district's not entitled to any of these Quimby fees, even though it's very obvious that the district will be servicing these residents. Additionally, the district offered an opportunity to annex the development into the district's boundaries so that the way that at least the residents, throughout the residents, the property owners will be paying into the district's property tax pool, which we use to primarily fund all of our programs. At least for future residents coming into the development, they would help provide for the services which they will be taking part in. These points and these, uh, these, this expectation that the district would be assuming to take these residents on was essentially ignored in the response to the district's letter. And with that, I believe concludes my comments in regards to the PVRPD letter.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, for your comments. Do commissioners or staff have any questions or rebuttal? Commissioner McVale?
Yeah, Mr. Miller, I just have a question for you. You mentioned 75 participants in, in soccer or whatever from Somas use your facilities. Does the Somas community pay into those?
No, the Somas community does not pay into district, well, the Somas community pays into district fees and they use our fee-based programs. But other than that, the, the district does not receive property taxes from the Somas area at the moment.
Then what's, then what's the problem with this particular development then?
So the issue that the district has with this is that you're, you're adding in a population of approximately 1,100 new residents to an area that the district would essentially expect it to support without receiving any other in-kind, any in-kind or monetary, uh, uh, offset.
But if Somas doesn't, tell me what the difference is.
So that, while we are able to provide services for, for Somas, the district's parks are currently primarily oriented in and around Camarillo community as, the Camarillo city. And it's currently, the district's parks are currently overstressed by approximately 50 to 60 acres in regards to the amount of population we're expected to serve. So although these residents will be residing outside of the district boundaries, we expect that they will still be able to use our facilities. We do not plan to restrict that, but they will be adding to an already overburdened system.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, Chair King, Chair King, I'd like to speak on that behalf. This is Justin Bertolino of the Planning Division.
Yes, Justin.
We do have a condition of approval, uh, number 63, that will require the applicant to pay the associated Quimby fees. Those fees will be, um, evaluated after, uh, assuming that the project is approved and prior to the recordation of the parcel map. Because the project site is located outside of Pleasant Valley Park and Recreation District, it will go to the County GSA Fund. So these fees are being paid, and they will be assessed, and they will be contributed to the, the County Parks Department, which is under General Services.
Hey. Any other question? Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Bertolino. Megan, next?
All right, I have Mary Otten.
Hey, Mary.
Good morning. My name is Mary Otten. I'm with, also with Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District, and I'm actually the general manager. So I'm going to probably, may not need five minutes, but I will expand on some of the comments in which Anthony Miller had commented, and then just a comment on Justin's comment regarding Quimby fees. So to address Mr. McVale, uh, your comment regarding property tax. So it is true right now that Somas does not pay property tax to our district because they are outside of our district. But as I'm sure you are aware, or may not be aware, those residents do use our, do use our parks. So I think what the district is asking is that that property be annexed in so they can actually pay for a portion of the park system in which they will be using. As Anthony had mentioned, we have nine parks that are within a five-mile radius of, of that particular site. And the closest park that the county has, which we'll be receiving Quimby fees for, is which we'll be receiving Quimby fees for, is more than five miles. The next closest park, county park, is within 25 miles. So as most parks and neighborhoods, parks, community parks, most people go to parks within about a half-mile to a two-mile radius, which tells me that those community members are going to be using our services. And it's not just about, as Anthony had mentioned, it's not just about the community or the sports use. There is no other pool site, which we have a pool that's probably within five miles of that site. So I'm sure that they will be using those facilities. We have over 20 special events that will be going on that I'm sure that they will be using as well. So I think what we're trying to say is we would like this project to be relooked at, or from the park standpoint, to look at either an annexation or the very least with the Quimby fees, that those would be readjusted to go to the park district opposed to the county since those residents would be more likely to use our facilities. The other, a couple of other things with the project, and I can appreciate the fact that this project, and when they put it together, it was very thoughtfully put together, meaning that they looked at, you know, having community centers, looking at having park space. But with that, they have 1.44 acres per the applicant. And according to your code, they should be able to have a minimum of five acres when you look at that number of people. So that is short, and I know the Quimby fees are supposed to help with that, but that also means there's still a place that they need to go to recreate, which is an essential service. And I think one of the things that we have seen through COVID, and one of the things that has happened through COVID is they're encouraging people to be outside. And so that has put a further stress on our system. So I just want to make those comments. And once again, we would ask that you would relook at that and make sure that those notes would be taken into consideration for this. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Hearing none. Staff comments?
The.
Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I was jumping ahead.
Okay, good. We'd like our secretary to keep us on our toes. Who's next?
The next speaker is Ellen Brokaw. We're gonna ask her to unmute. She's unmuted.
Hey, Mr. Brokaw. Oh, Ellen Brokaw. You are, you have the floor.
Good morning, commissioners. I want to talk to you this morning about what the Somus project will mean to farm workers and why it's so badly needed. You have so many speakers that I'm, and Barbara Macri Ortiz has already eloquently covered some of what I was going to say. So I'll try to be briefer than, certainly less than five minutes. I'm the retired CEO of Brokaw Ranch Company and have been on the House Farm Workers Board of Directors for many years. When I was working in the family farming business, I was the personnel manager. And in that capacity, I gained great respect for the work ethic and family values of our Mexican-born employees. I also, and this was 30, 40 years ago that this started, I heard heart-wrenching stories of the way many families were living, some in sheds or garages, and many crowded into one-family homes that they shared with one, two, or three other families. We have learned in the pandemic something that farm employers already knew, that farm workers are absolutely essential. And they also, because of their living conditions, have been at very high risk in this horrendous experience of our last year. Overcrowding not only has put them at risk in the pandemic, but it has many other bad effects on health. It produces high levels of stress. It negatively impacts the performance of children in school. And it's bad for the larger communities in which these overcrowded homes exist. There are a lot of farm workers who live permanently in Ventura County. They're counted in various ways, but they're, are close to 40,000 who are already here, have been here, many of them for many years. And in the last 30 years, fewer than 1,000 dedicated farm worker units have been built in Oxnard, Ventura, Santa Paula, and Fillmore, incorporated areas west and east of Fillmore. The Somus Ranch project, as you have read and heard, will provide affordable, safe, decent homes for a significant additional number of farm workers and their families in a well-designed and managed complex. Its location adjacent to Camarillo not only fills a geographical gap, but will give the residents easy access to shops, medical services, et cetera. So I am here today to ask you to give the Somus Ranch project and our essential farm workers your full support. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions? I'd like to make one personal comment. Ellen, I remember you well from the founding of the Regional Civic Alliance. We worked on that together. Have many fond memories of our work together and appreciate longstanding contribution of yourself and your family to the county. So delighted to see you here.
Thank you, Commissioner King. We have a wonderful county with so many collaborative, forward-looking organizations. It's a privilege to be a Ventura County longtime resident.
Well, we're proud to have you. Okay, moving along. Who's next?
I have Karen Flock.
Hello. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Karen Flock. I'm a board member of House Farm Workers, and I work for the Housing Authority of the City of San Buenaventura as a developer of affordable housing. For many years, I was with Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, where I was involved in the development of several affordable housing projects. I've been a developer of and an advocate for farm worker housing and affordable housing for many years. As Barbara mentioned earlier, it's very difficult to obtain an appropriate site for farm worker housing and to develop these projects. That's why you've seen so few of them come forward. So this is a great opportunity to really make a dent in the need for farm worker housing. It's an excellent opportunity. And it's also a great location because, as Ellen mentioned, services will be available nearby to the residents. And the site will help meet fair housing objectives. The Tax Credit Allocation Committee of the State of California and our Department of Housing and Community Development actively support the development of affordable housing in high-opportunity areas such as this one. These are areas that have been identified as having high educational attainment, employment earnings, and economic mobility. Research has shown that living in such areas has positive impacts on economic, educational, and health incomes, particularly long-term outcomes for children. So I strongly support this much-needed project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Flock. Questions? Comments? All right, who is next?
Okay. Next, I have Linda Bronschweiger.
Okay, Linda, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. My name is Linda Bronschweiger, and I live and work in the Mission Oaks area of Camarillo for the last 21 years. And I live adjacent to the proposed project. I've been on the House Farm Workers Board of Directors since its inception in the early 2000s. In addition, I'm the CEO of the Housing Trust Fund Ventura County as well as the Housing Land Trust of Ventura County. Farm workers are the backbone of Ventura County agriculture. Ventura County's farms and ranches employ nearly 41,600 men and women. These are farm workers who are critical to Ventura County's $2 billion a year agricultural industry. Without them, crops would be not harvested, and the lush landscape that we all love, that is green fields and orchards, would go unattended. According to SCAG's recent report, in Camarillo alone, 24% of renter households spend 50% or more of their gross income on housing. Farm workers are likely spending much more than 50% on rent, leaving little for healthcare, childcare, groceries, or anything else for that matter. The lack of housing that is affordable to residents earning low to extremely low income, such as farm workers, is now a life and death challenge due to the pandemic. Developments like Somus Ranch take many years to plan, as you have heard, working through the design and development challenges and specifically securing financing. The Somus Ranch apartments, if approved, would fill a critical void in our housing stock as soon as a couple of years. I strongly urge you to fully support and recommend the Somus Ranch development to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bronschweiger. Commissioners, any questions? Very good. Megan, who's next?
All right, next one is Rob Roy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Good morning, planning commissioners. Rob Roy, I am the president and general counsel for the last 44 years at the Ventura County Ag Association. We represent virtually all of the major growers, shippers, packing houses, and labor contractors in the county. I have, for years, been involved in the issue of farm, labor, housing, and zoning issues. I served on a committee along with Commissioner McVale and Barbara Macri and other government representatives at the time to seek specific areas of the county which were compatible for zoning for the construction of these type of units. Unfortunately, the counties have been extremely slow with regard to attaining those goals. And it's clear from some of the information put on the screen this morning that we are also failing with regard to the state housing element law in terms of trying to get sufficient housing available for these low-income-type families. I don't need to tell you that COVID-19, the pandemic, has been a blight upon the agricultural industry. But more importantly, it exposed the fact that many of the employees who are essential workers, as defined by the federal and state government, are living in very difficult and unhealthful conditions with multiple residents. And this is serving as a vector for additional COVID infections. I think also, I want to respond to some comment that was made earlier by someone who I think is probably associated with SOAR, that he said that housing was exempt from SOAR. I would submit the contrary. In fact, the county, in adopting SOAR, wanted to keep agriculture sustainable and to add and improve necessary goals and policies to encourage agriculture to remain viable in the county for the life of the ordinance. What better way to follow those policies and achieve those policies than to, let's go forward with this type of development? I mean, but let's face it, this is a Class A development. It's been looked at every which way to Sunday. Yes, we can all Monday morning quarterback and add specific issues to it. But the fact of the matter is, is that this is necessary to agriculture. It's necessary to our county's ability to meet state housing goals. And we wholeheartedly support your staff recommendation to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roy. Questions? Comments?
I just want to know when he's going to retire.
Well, I've outlasted you probably about another 10 or more years. It's been 44. I don't think I'll be out of here for a long time, Earl. I just love this work too much.
They're going to carry out with your boots on, then.
Either that, or yeah, I'll have a heart attack sitting at my desk and my wife will wonder where I'm at.
Okay. Secretary, who's next?
I have Louise Lampara. Sorry, Louise Lampara. Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. I'm going to keep my comments brief as the staff report and project exhibits did an excellent job at providing you specific information. COLAB strongly supports the Somus Ranch Farm Worker Housing Project, and we urge the Planning Commission to vote to recommend approval. SOAR reminds us that our agricultural lands can only be preserved if the local agricultural industry is economically viable. Economic viability depends in large part upon the availability to attract and retain workers. Very little farm worker housing has been built in our county in recent years, and that has resulted in a significant shortage of workers. The shortage of workers reduces local production and harvesting capabilities, which negatively impacts the economic viability of local agriculture. To correct this, SOAR mandates that the county, quote, "actively promote infrastructure for farm worker housing to support the continuing viability of agriculture." And the 2040 general plan echoes this several times, including policy LU-8.5, quote, "The county shall support the development of safe and quality farm worker housing that facilitates a reliable labor force and promotes efficient agricultural operations." The Somus Ranch Farm Worker Housing Project fulfills both SOAR and the general plan's mandates to develop more farm worker housing. The project applicant has worked proactively to address issues, and the project will provide safe, high-quality, affordable housing for our essential agricultural workers. This project is a big step forward in preserving the future of local agriculture and providing quality housing for some of our most essential workers and their families. Please vote to recommend approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lampara. Any questions? Comments? Okay, who's next, Madam Secretary?
I have Jackson Piper.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Piper. Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Jackson Piper. I am one of the founding members of Ventura County YMB, a advocacy organization composed of volunteers who want to see better and more housing throughout Ventura County. Most of the time, we focus our efforts on the cities in Ventura County because that is both where there's the greatest need and the greatest opportunity for housing, since so much of Ventura County itself, the unincorporated areas, are bound by SOAR and limit the types of housing that can be constructed there. In this case, I want to speak personally and say that this is an extraordinary project. It is something that could set a precedent for future farm worker housing in Ventura County itself. And really is something that, given the limitations imposed by other kinds of housing development in, you know, in terms of SOAR, in terms of requirements for height limits and density levels in the other communities of Ventura County, this is really an extraordinary use of the agricultural space that will be developed. And I think both it should be noted that SOAR specifically exempts farm worker housing from the vote-of-the-people requirement. And agricultural land is designated as allowing the farm worker housing use. And also that the roughly 18 acres that would be developed to provide this 360-unit complex of farm worker housing, which would support the farm workers and their families, is out of roughly, this is from, let's see, this is from. let's see, this is from, sorry, one moment. FarmbureauVC.com in 2012 said that Ventura County contained roughly one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand acres of important farmland. So we're talking about eighteen acres out of roughly that number to provide three-hundred-and-sixty units of housing dedicated towards farmworkers and their families, also immediately adjacent to all the resources of the city of Camarillo for them. I really don't think you could have a more ideal location or a better project within the requirements of the county of Ventura and one that better fits the needs for the region economically and for the population of farmworkers that are looking for housing and desperately need housing. As you saw in this presentation earlier, we have around one-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-five current dedicated farmworker housing units in the county. Please keep in mind that is for that, you know, one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand acres or so of farmland. That means, you know, there are a lot of farmworkers out there who just don't have access to the housing resources that they're going to need for serving our agricultural economy in this county. And I really think that this project is designed to help meet the need. It will set a precedent for the future. And as far as the aesthetics of the project, you probably couldn't ask for more from what it's being provided. There definitely could be improvements in terms of adding, you know, carports, solar facilities, that sort of thing. I do not think that those requirements, I don't think that those should be made requirements in this project. I think those could definitely be added afterwards if that works out for the developer, if it's not possible for the developer to effectively pay for those while developing this project in initial stages. I know I'm kind of rambling on, so I'll close by just saying this is a great project, and I hope that you all support the project and approve all of the parcel map, the conditional use permit, and the plan development permit, as have been presented here today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Dukas, do you have a question or comment?
Mr. Piper, are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Hi. I'm just wondering how you think this is precedent-setting?
Well, there are a few elements to it. One, I think the fact that it has the onsite wastewater treatment facility is a great addition because, in a way, it means that, you know, a lot of our farmland is not going to be connected to the grid, you know, and municipal services, as it were. And by having an onsite wastewater facility that can recycle the water and put it to good use, that's, you know, otherwise disposed of, that improves the efficiency of such projects, and it makes other, you know, farmland more viable for development of future farmworker housing, which we obviously will still need. I also think architecturally, it is precedent-setting because, you know, when you think of a developer creating affordable housing, it's going to have to be as cheap as possible to really make it cost-effective. But the renderings I've seen of this project, they show deference to the good architecture that is present in other areas of the community, especially the Camarillo style of Spanish colonial architecture. There's been, from what I can tell, a real effort made to make this look nice. And it's, from what I read, it's a maximum thirty-five feet tall. It's screened from some public view by the landscaping and everything, and it's set back. This is clearly designed to kind of look nice but not stand out, you know, like a sore thumb. It's, in that way, I think it's a precedent because it's not going to be some, you know, mega-project that just, you know, shouts, "Look at me," and can be a visual blight to the community. I think this is a very good addition to what Ventura County has.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And is your background in law or in planning?
Yeah, my background is in planning. I currently work for the County of Los Angeles in the Planning Department there, but I'm speaking as a Ventura County resident in this capacity. And I specifically went to planning school to, in the hope that I would be able to contribute to good planning in Ventura County, so.
Thank you. I'll tell you what was a dead giveaway, that if you was a planner, is mentioning onsite wastewater facilities is a concern.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Piper. Madam Secretary, who's next?
I have Ruth Luvanos.
Good morning, Planning Commissioners.
Councilmember Luvanos, take it away.
Good morning. Thank you. I am here to speak in support of the Somas Ranch Farm Worker Housing Complex. Our farmworkers are vital to our community and deserve to have safe and accessible housing, which this project provides. As the granddaughter of a farmworker, my grandfather was a farmworker in Broly. It is really important that, you know, we reflect on the needs of our farmworkers. Our farmworkers work so hard to put their lives on the line. Some of, they have, among the lowest lifespan expectancy for people here in the United States. They have a life expectancy, lifespan of only forty-nine years here in the United States, and that is due to the difficulty of the work that they perform, the exposure to toxins, and the lack of access to reliable healthcare. During this pandemic, we have seen numerous farmworkers and their families pass away due to COVID because there is no affordable housing for each family unit to have their own home. We have multiple farmworker families sharing one home, which spreads COVID and the inability for them to be able to quarantine in individual households for each family unit. There are various nationwide studies demonstrating the devastating impact that COVID has had on Latinos. And we know that over ninety percent of farmworkers are Latinos. And this impresses the urgency of this project to be built to ensure the safety of these essential workers, who make sure we all have food on our tables. In addition, and I heard one of the Planning Commissioners mention, the environmental concerns. Having housing like this one that matches the economic level of the approximately thirty-six thousand farmworkers who reside in Ventura County will improve our environment. It will reduce the need to commute from places that are further away but more affordable. I'm really excited to see that there's so many bike spaces. If you have housing, which I consider on the east side of Ventura County, which I represent, that means that there's less of a need for cars. And that means that you can have more people that can walk or bike to work or to school, who are, you know, participating in the farmwork that needs to be done on the east side of Ventura County, thereby reducing the carbon footprint and improving our environment for everyone, as well as the air quality. This email, this statement, I had written this as an email in case I couldn't get to you guys to speak in between classes. This statement reflects my own personal opinion. It is not a representation of the entire Simi Valley City Council. I wanted to include that disclaimer. But I want to thank you for considering this. Somas Ranch Farm Worker Housing Complex is very vital to our community and to our region, and especially to the east Ventura County, where there is such a need for housing for our low-income workers, which are our farmworkers. Thank you for your time.
Okay, questions? Comments? Very well. Thank you, Councilmember Luvanos. Who's next?
Scott Zimmerman.
Okay, Mr. Zimmerman.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. And, you know, it's great to hear all the positive feedback from everyone. And as a great point that was made, you know, that farmworkers are essential, a critical part to Ventura County, and just as a whole, you know, in our daily lives. You know, I just want to say, you know, as critical as they are and the need for the housing, like I say, the same can be said for the construction aspect and the need to keep the other part of the central workforce, construction workers, keeping some kind of local hire provision as a part of this, you know, which helps bring the whole thing, you know, a full three-hundred-and-sixty, where local people are, local construction workers are building it, you know, from the ground up, which turns into the local farmworkers who obviously live in it. It becomes just a whole lifecycle part of it. And just like to see a local hire provision be a part of this project as well. Thank you.
Okay, questions? Comments? Very well. Madam Secretary, who is next?
I have Armando Delgado.
Mr. Delgado?
Good morning, Commissioner. Well, staff and fellow county residents. My Mexican immigrant grandparents worked in the Oxnard Plains back in the nineteen forties. They were part of the Braceros movement for years before returning back to their homeland. Later, my parents immigrated here from Mexico through the farmworker program in the late seventies. My parents were strong believers in the United Farmworkers. I even had the pleasure to meet the great Cesar Chavez as a child in Oxnard. Well, my name is Armando Delgado, and I was born and raised in Oxnard. I've moved around from apartment-to-town homes, rental homes, and I'm now a proud homeowner of Ventura County, also a lifelong resident of Ventura County. I've been a carpenter with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, Local 805, here in Ventura County for eighteen years. My union represents over eighteen hundred hard-working, blue-collar members and operate the only accredited carpenter apprenticeship training program in the area. There's been much debate over lack of skilled workforce in the state of California. We have invested much time with our school districts to provide them with a curriculum so that they can teach basic fundamental skills to our students and prepare them for a professional carpenter career. A project like this can have a positive impact on the local community through set goals for local hiring provisions and provisions of education. An agreement to use local labor decreases the likelihood of working people living in poverty, increases rates of health coverage, and increases the probability of success for an individual pursuing a career in the construction trade. Higher wages provide a livable rate for construction workers that is consistent with local market standards. That is so because they attract higher skilled workers resulting in higher productivity, fewer safety problems, and more efficiency. Local contractors who are partnered with the local trades fund the apprenticeship programs that train more of our residents, our students, and specifically our women and veterans for prospering construction careers, generating a stable supply of skilled workers to meet and the construction needs for decades to come. The Southwest Carpenters are prepared to facilitate that by actively recruiting veterans to help hard hats programs, recruiting women and helping them transition into the construction industry, and heavily invest in our future by reintroducing trade skills back into our high schools. Not to mention, we assist the rehabilitation of some members of our society who have lived more than a favorable lifestyle and are assisting our disadvantaged community members to transition into our trade. Well, today, we're here to ask our Planning Commission to approve a new farmworker housing project. We all agree that it's the right thing to do for our families working our plains and feeding our nation. We need to house our frontline farming workforce while they in turn bring food to our tables. They need decent living arrangements so they can provide their families a better quality of life. After all, I was one of those farmworker kids who lived in rundown apartments, garages. Graduated from high school, joined the United States Marine Corps, and now have come home to represent hard-working, professional union carpenters trying to live with pride and dignity. Do the same for our new age Braceros. They deserve it. Please don't bite the hand that feeds you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado. Questions? Comments? Yes, Commissioner Dukas.
On behalf of the Planning Commission, just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you. It was an honor.
Thank you, Commissioner Dukas. Madam Secretary, who's next?
All right, I have Jonathan Duran.
Okay. Mr. Duran? Is he there?
Did I not see him?
Oh, so sorry. I'll keep this brief. I know there's a lot of other comments out there that, you know, you guys have to go through. Again, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Duran. I'm a union carpenter and a representative with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I am in support of this project of the Somas Farm Working Housing. As a lifelong residence of Ventura County, we need more housing for our essential workers. Born and raised in Santa Paula, had a lot of friends that grew up in the housing, in the farmworker housing. So I understand that they are very cramped in there, but as this project is coming, I'm in support of it. I think this is a great thing for Ventura County, and I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. Any questions? Comments? All right, Madam Secretary, who's next?
Alejandro Perez.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Perez.
Good morning, Commissioners and attendees. My name is Alejandro Perez, and I am a union carpenter and have been for the last fifteen years. As a son of farmworkers who came up in the Cesar Chavez era, this project hits close to home. I heard Mrs. Alan Brokoff talk about stories that she heard from the farmworkers, and it brings back memories of me growing up and remember stories that my parents tell us to this day. I was raised in a farmworker community built in the eighties in the east end of Santa Paula in nineteen eighty. This community gave my parents and family a nice home to live in and brothers and sisters to grow up in. Forty years later, my parents still own this home. Not only will this project help our community with jobs, revenue, and housing, but it will also give many families the opportunity to have somewhere nice and clean to live in for the coming years. In addition, with the housing shortage currently in Southern California, it is sorely needed. In closing, I just want to say I support this development, and thank you to all.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Any questions? Comments? Very good. Thank you again. Madam Secretary, who is next?
Jose Garcia. No?
No?
Good morning.
There we go.
Okay.
Good morning.
Garcia, you have the floor.
Good morning, Planning Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your service and congratulate the new-appointed ones with your new task here. My name is Jose Garcia. I am a member of the Launa, Labor's International Union of North America. I'm sorry. We are in support of this project, and it's a long time coming. I also come from a farming community of Santa Paula.
Whoops. What happened?
It appears we lost him, so if we can go on to the next speaker, maybe he'll rejoin us and we can have him continue.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So.
Who's next?
The last speaker I have is Manley McNinch. I think he's here.
Hello?
Oh, there we go.
Hang on a second. Is that Mr. Garcia?
No, this is McNinch.
Oh, okay.
No problem. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up what I've been hearing today. This is an awesome project that they're proposing to bring into the area. It's greatly needed, and I think it'd be a huge mistake not to go forward with it. When you look around at all, a lot of the existing housing and stuff, our farmworkers right now, it's a lot of it substandard, and the idea of actually putting people in homes where they can do their laundry in-house, to me, is just really great in this day and age. And I hope that you move the project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNinch. Any questions or comments from the commission? Very good. Was that the last commenter, Megan?
Yes, that's the last one I have as far as public comments over Zoom. While we're still waiting for Jose, I do have four email comments I would like to read into the record.
Okay, well, let's go ahead, and if Mr. Garcia- Mr. Garcia or whoever was the first commenter, um, show up, then we can kind of stop reading and invite them in, but, uh, please go ahead.
Okay, so I have four letters. The first one comes from Connor Finney. Hello, my name is Connor Finney, and I am speaking in support of this project on behalf of Ventura County Y I M B Y, a volunteer organization with dozens of members all over Ventura County. Our region is facing a severe affordable housing shortage, and this project would help families in need. Farm workers have been disproportionately affected by the coronavirus due to overcrowded living conditions in substandard housing. For these reasons, we urge you to support this project. Um, the next question, uh, the next comment is from Max Guinness. We're in a dire housing shortage. Every home helps, especially with overcrowded farm worker housing projects exasperated the pandemic. Please approve these homes. Um, this comes from Susan Wolk. It's, um, stated questions. She has seven questions. One, proposed rents seem terribly high for farm workers. How were proposed rents determined? Two, will there be rent control to protect tenants? Three, are the number of occupants per unit limited in any way? Four, do tenants pay for utilities or include it in rent? Five, are buildings guaranteed to remain farm worker housing? If so, for how many years? Six, when can the some divided lots be sold and can they be sold individually? Last question, I know transportation has weighed in already, but is extremely difficult already to make left turns into Somus in any direction about county liability when accidents start occurring. Do you want me to continue with the next letter?
Uh, let me finish my notes here, because that was seven quick questions.
Yeah, I only got six of them. Want me to reread them or?
No, I got seven. We're running, we're writing so fast.
So the first one is proposed rents, rent control. Go ahead.
Do we wanna, um, before we take the, the last comment, do we want to have staff address these questions now or, uh, wait till we're done? I, 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 the head shaking, say, let's wait till we're done. Very good. All right, uh, next.
The last, the last comment is from uh, Christie. Hello, dear honorable commissioners, I request you continue this project until another date. Oh, excuse me, continue this project until another date. Last month, I emailed senior planner, Mr. Justin Bertoline regarding the school impact report. He never responded. After reading the E I R, the report did not completely address the impact to Somus School or nearby Camarillo Schools. It's estimated up to three hundred children from the development will need access to public education. Somus School is small and has the capacity to provide education to maybe sixty of those three hundred expected children. Where will the remaining two hundred and forty children go? Is Pleasant Valley School District involved in this discussion? This should be evaluated before approval is given. Also, registration for public statements via Zoom should be made available the day of the public hearing. I do not understand why the public is required to register a day in advance. Many cities in the county do not require such early registration. Thank you, Christie Porter, Somus resident. That's the, all the letters I have.
Okay, did we get any, um, Zoom commenters back?
I'm checking. Nothing yet.
Okay. Um, in that case, um, I'm prepared to close the public hearing and confine comments to the commission. Um, I'm getting stared at by Commissioner Adukas. Are you gonna correct me already?
Well, no, I was just wondering if we could hold off on, on, uh, closing the public hearing because I have questions that I don't know, um, who they would be directed to and answered by.
Okay, um, in the meantime, uh, should I give the applicant and staff an opportunity to respond to any of these comments? And in which order? Advocate first?
The, the applicant has this opportunity to rebut as needed?
That's, that's why I brought you along, Commissioner. That's why I consulted. Okay, um, let's hand it back to the applicant and, uh, see if you want to respond to any of the public comments.
Hi, I'm, I'm gonna refer to, um, Patrick and see if he has any, any rebuttal statements he'd like to make. Also, I'd like to, um, see if Bill Teller, as part of our team, has any comments he would like to make.
Okay. Mr. Shanahan, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. Um, appreciate all, uh, everyone who, uh, participated and spoke in support of, uh, farm worker housing. We're, we're excited to be a part of this program. We know about the need in Ventura County. Uh, this is a great project. We appreciate all the help that's been put forth already with the county staff and, uh, the applicant team already. And, um, we're here to answer any questions, uh, from the commission.
Okay, um.
This is Alex Pratt. I just, I just wanted, I'm with AmCal as well. Just want to answer a couple of questions I heard come up. Uh, one of which was, um, yeah, it's very standard for, uh, to designate affordable housing projects to be affordable uh, for fifty-five years. Sometimes it can be affordable into perpetuity, and that kind of depends on a kind of the negotiations and discussions with the municipality. But in the state of California, it's standard to have them fifty-five years. Sometimes they designate them as fifty-seven years because they give us two years to build it and then fifty-five years of affordability after that. Uh, there was a question about whether or not, uh, AmCal is a nonprofit. AmCal is not a nonprofit. Uh, but we work with nonprofits on all of our projects. Uh, so this project, like virtually all of our projects, we will have a nonprofit partner and that person would be managing, or that in, uh, organization would be managing the project, and they'd be called the managing general partner. That was one question.
And who would that be?
We haven't made a final decision about that yet.
Okay.
Tenant utilities, uh, we have something called a, um, a utility allowance. And so the rent is reduced by the amount of the projected amount of tenant utility costs for things like electric, water is included, uh, et cetera. Uh, let's see. I, I, now I've got to read my own writings. I'm, I'm trying to read one part that I can't see. It said limits to something. I'm not sure. I know there were seven questions. I was trying to keep up.
Limited for farm workers.
Oh, yeah, we have the ability to designate limited to farm workers, yes. I think this was something else, some other kind of cap, but.
Yeah, there was a question about, um, are occupants per unit?
Oh, right, right. So, yes, there are limit to how many occupants per unit, and they are designated amounts both from HUD and the state of California about how many tenants you would have per unit. And so because we have a annual certification, uh, we moderate how many people are in the units, and there are limits on how many people can be in each unit, yes.
Okay, um, uh, there was a question about rent controls and, uh, I read that, but maybe you could, uh, respond to that by explaining how affordable calculations are made.
Sure. As far as rent control is concerned, um, the state and the federal government through HUD uh, designate, um, what the limits are on rent. And the way that calculation is done is when we have a, a project that's put forward, we usually designate what the affordability level will be for some percentage of tenants. So there's something called the average median income, uh, is the thing that we operate based on. And the average median income would be, uh, for instance, I'm not sure what it is in Ventura, but let's say that it was sixty thousand dollars, uh, like it is in Los Angeles, around sixty thousand dollars. Typically, you would take that average median income, and then we would designate units to be between typically thirty and sixty percent of area median income. So a person, and then that person who made, let's say, thirty percent of the sixty thousand dollars would be making about whatever twenty thousand dollars. And then they wouldn't have to pay more than thirty percent of their income as rent. And so that's kind of how the formula is done. I'm not sure if that was, I didn't explain it in the best way. But, um, so it's designated based on, you know, what your income level is and what the income level is for, you know, per unit in the project. But it'd be typically, again, between thirty and sixty percent of the area median income.
Okay, and, uh, you know, to go together, there were a question about how long will it be reserved for farm workers and can these units be sold?
The, the, the units are not, as we're planning them right now, they've not been designated to be sold. Um, or, you know, because they're rental units. Um, you know, we've looked into projects where there was a possibility of people developing equity over time and then potentially owning their units, a little more complicated scenario, but no, as just typical renters, no, you would not be able to sell them. What was the other question? I'm sorry.
Uh, the other one was, how, uh, how long is this reserved for farm workers?
Yeah, and so, you know, we, this will be something we'll deal with with you municipality in terms of how long it's dealt with farm workers. But I would expect us to have a covenant that would match the affordability period.
It's my understanding, excuse me, that, um, there will be a deed restriction against this property, which essentially makes it farm worker housing in perpetuity. Am I misunderstanding that?
And I actually just don't happen to know the details on this specific project. But yes, we have deed restrictions on all of our projects, uh, that designate how long they're going to be for specific use. So yes, it wouldn't surprise me if that deed restriction would be in place for farm workers.
Commissioner Adukas, I didn't mean to speak over you.
Not at all. Um, I was, uh, the way that I interpreted the question from, um, the email was that the lots would be sold. There are going to be four parcels. And I, I believe that she was asking if the other lots, lots two and three, or perhaps four, will be sold.
Okay, and I'll let the, um, maybe Bill or Dan answer that question.
Yeah. I, I'd like, Bill Teller, is, is Bill Teller available?
Yes, I'm here. Oh, hold on, let me, let me unmute.
Uh, now you muted yourself.
I didn't hear any reactions, sorry.
There you go.
Okay, um, would you repeat the question? I'm, I want to make sure I answer it correctly.
Well, frankly, I'm not sure of the question. I was taking notes from an email, and perhaps, um, our secretary can, um, can repeat the question so that I don't misinterpret it. I believe that she was concerned about lots being sold.
Oh, yes.
That, that the question was when?
We have been negotiating with AmCal on all three lots, lots one, two, and three. Um, and they will be taken down in phases. One hundred units in the first phase, one hundred units on parcel two in the second phase, hundred and sixty units on parcel three in the third phase. We haven't anticipated, we, we will, you know, we have not negotiated with anybody else other than AmCal to, for the acquisition of those three parcels. The fourth parcel will remain in agriculture. Um, we're not involved with that parcel at all. The other question I had, uh, I was going to answer, or at least try to answer, was, um, the school district, and we have met with Superintendent Vaca with the, with the Somus School District and, uh, are excited to work with them. They're, they've acquired a new site, fourteen acres adjacent to or very close to the site that they currently have, uh, that was mentioned that there is affected by a, a, a gas line that could be dangerous to the children. So the district has acquired this fourteen acre site and are moving ahead with plans to build a new elementary school. Our project will generate a significant amount of money in the, in the form of an impact fee for the Somus School District, aid them in constructing their new school. Um, so I just wanted to make sure you understood that we were going to be paying our way as part of the development of this project. That's all I have. Anybody has any other questions?
Okay, anybody?
I, I have a number of questions, but, um, but I'll wait if someone else wants to go first.
Uh, Commissioner White?
Um, yeah, similar to the question about, um, coordinating with the school district, uh, we heard some concern from the Parks District and it may be a recommendation for annexation of this property into the Parks District. I don't know if it's Lisa or Bill or Alex, uh, what, what's the status of that? Is that being proposed by, uh, by the applicant of this project?
We, this is Bill. Um, we have not discussed annexation of the property into Pleasant Valley. Uh, it's, it's a great district. Right now, we're in the county. We're, um, paying our Quimby fees to the county, and they can apply them as they see fit. Now, we are also, um, our landscape plan is fairly aggressive. Uh, it represents, you know, millions, several million dollars of landscaping that we will be doing onsite to provide active recreation areas for our, our residents and our community. We, we recognize that there will be regional parks impacted, and we are willing to pay the Quimby fee that is mandated by the county.
And so it would be up to the, the county to decide how to allocate those Quimby fees on to the the local Parks District? Is that what would need to happen?
You'll have to ask the county that. We have not discussed with them how they would allocate those funds.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner McVale?
Yeah, to follow up on Commissioner White's comments on the Quimby fees, that was going to be one of my questions to county council. If it is possible for the county to, uh, allocate part of those funds to Pleasant Valley, uh, Recreation District.
This is Jeff Barnes, County Council. That's a good question. Um, Quimby fees are typically handled after project approval, uh, so we have not researched that issue. Um, and so that's something that we, we could look into.
Yeah, because I, I, I sympathize with them, but, uh, on the other hand, I don't, because if they're fifty acres short of what they need, they also need to work with their own city of, uh, Camarillo to figure out more places to have parks.
Okay. Anybody else? Uh, Mr., oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Is, is now an appropriate time to go through my notes, my questions?
Oh, can I just ask one question of Mr. Barnes before you jump in? Mr. Barnes, I guess my question in listening to the discussion about Quimby fees and the park and the Park District wanting to annex the, uh, this project into their, uh, service area. My question is, who is the authority on annexing? I guess I always thought that was LAPCO, but now what's the mechanism for that? And does it even involve the applicant?
Yeah, Commissioner King, your, my understanding is consistent with yours. LAPCO would be the, um, agency responsible for that annexation, and, um, I, I don't want to get into that process, which is, is separate from, from the project before your commission. before your commission, but but it is a separate process and, um, I believe it it could be initiated by the, the Recreation and Park District. I'm not positive, but it would have to go through LAPCO and that's a separate process.
This is, uh, this is Anthony Miller. I'm sorry. Can I actually chime in here real quick from the Park District?
Well, I hear somebody talking, but you're breaking up.
Hi, this is, this is Anthony again from the Park District and just wanted to add a little light to that, that comment about LAPCO.
Go ahead.
So under California Public Resources Code Sections fifty seven eighty through fifty seven ninety one, uh, the Recreation and Park District could annex that, uh, that area. LAPCO would manage the process. However, um, this can also, it can be initiated, not only the Park District can be a party to the process, but since this is a county project and it lies outside the district, it can also be initiated by the county as a part of a, as a part of approving this development. We, uh, had a discussion with Kyle Looma at LAPCO approximately a month and a half ago about the process. And, uh, that is a a potential option as a condition of approval.
Okay. Well, what, what I think is clear is that doesn't bear on our, uh, recommendation on this project at this point in time.
True. Just wanted to, uh, make sure that that information was out there with you, for you guys as well.
Okay. Um, unless any other commissions have, have stuff, let Commissioner Educas have at it.
Okay, well, most of, most of my questions have been, um, asked and answered, but there's still, um, some in my notes that, um, I just want to direct uh, perhaps to, um, staff. And that is this, um, question about the possible failure of the wastewater treatment plant and, and, uh, if that was something that needed to be, um, addressed in the EIR. So that would be for Justin Bertling.
This is Jeff Barnes, County Council. Uh, I the, the general rule in SEQA is that the EIRs and environmental documents only need to address potential environmental impacts that are reasonably foreseeable. And so the, an EIR environmental document does not have to look at every potential worst case scenario, and that's the box that I would put a, a failure of the system into. It, it, it will be operated by, um, uh, Sanitation District and it, in terms of the operation, it will be required to comply with, um, with state law and regulations. And so for purposes of SEQA, it's entirely reasonable and appropriate, and I would say necessary to assume that the facility will be operated in accordance with applicable law.
I see. It's not a sequel issue though, and, um, probably, uh, going in that same line has to do with the high pressure gas line that's, um, impacting the school and is there, uh, you know, an impact uh, from the gas line? Not a sequel question.
Commissioner Educas, are you, uh, referring to the gas line in proximity to the project or the school itself?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure. Why not deal with, uh, both? Uh, one was mentioned by, um, uh, Patrick Richards that there was a, a high pressure gas line. And that, um, there was, uh,
I'm sorry to cut you off. The, the project is not in proximity to that high pressure gas line or any other high pressure gas lines. Um, I think the comment was made in relation to the, the occupancy or the, the population of, of the school and then, and then necessity for a larger school and the fact that, um, you know, it could pose some, uh, threat to the, the students or staff of that school. But the project site is not overlaying, um, above a high pressure gas line.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And my last question has to do with the, um, recommendation from Scott Zimmerman that there be a local higher, higher provision. Um, has that been looked into?
I'll have to defer to the applicant on that one.
Hey, uh, Lisa, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I, again, I, I hate to keep deferring to AmCal, but, um, I, I wanted, they will be the developers of the project. So, um, Alex or, um, Patrick, do you have any comment on that?
Could you repeat the question? I apologize.
We had, um, several, um, speakers in support of the project that, uh, but one, Scott Zimmerman asked that there be a local hire provision. Is that something that has been considered?
Yes, uh, that's common for us to have a local prior hire provision. We typically, uh, establish goals for local hiring as opposed to quotas per se. Uh, but that's very typical of our developments, uh, and also a, an aspect of HUD requirements, uh, through Section Three.
So, um, directing this question to staff, um, is that something that the Planning Commission, um, needs to do? Or is that something that, um, goes along with all of the, um, other laws that apply? I just want to know what the, what our limits are.
Yeah, I, uh, Jeff Barnes, County Council, I, I've never seen the, the county in the land use context impose, um, a local hire provision. The, the county has debated whether to do that with regard to the county's own public works projects. But that's not what's before your commission today. And so I, 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 I don't know if it's lawful. I, I, I would have concerns that, 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 about its legality. And so, um,
Okay, I just want, I wanted to follow up though, because, um, this, uh, uh, hearing is not pro forma. We're hearing these issues raised for the first time.
Of course, yeah.
This is, this is our chance. So, um, I want to make sure that everybody who participates in the public, public planning process understands that, uh, we take, uh, their participation in the public hearing seriously and we follow up on every issue that they raise to the best of our ability.
Uh, this is Alex, but I'll just mention that, uh, typically the local hiring provisions tend to be in the loan documents as opposed to as covenants.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay. Uh, staff, like to present any closing statements?
Chair King, I'd like to follow up on a few of the, um, the SOAR related comments from Mr. Pat Richards. Um, he stated that, he stated that the, the, the use could be, or the, the development could be classified as urban development per the guidelines for orderly development. Uh, in particular, there, he stated that, um, because the the establishment of a new community sewer system or significant expansion of existing community sewer system to meet that, to meet that definition of urban development, you'd have to make that finding. However, a community wastewater treatment is a self-contained treatment facility that does not tie into existing sewer system facilities. Therefore, it is not classified as a sewer system. Um, it is its own, like I said, self-contained, uh, packaged treatment facility. So it's not considered a sewer system and the, um, urban development is, uh, definition does not apply to this project. Also, I'd like to follow up with, uh, Commissioner King. The, the proposed, um, parking space number is six fifty-four and the required per zoning ordinance, um, is six forty-four. So they are over by, um, ten parking spaces.
Yeah, actually, I think that was Commissioner McFale, but
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't want to give credit.
That's okay.
Uh, anything else, Mr. Bertline?
No, that is all. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Educas?
I just forgot one last thing. Um, is approval of this project in any way precedent setting?
Uh, Jeff Barnes, County Council. I feel like I should have a, like a, a tape recorded response for that. Because I feel like someone asked at every hearing, um, no, every, every project is decided based on its own merits. And, uh, so that's a short answer.
Okay, it was asserted during, um, public comment and I just want to, um, make sure and you know, there, there, there might be some people who are listening that would be concerned that we're going to, um, lose more farmland um, in order to build apartments and that they might be, um, alarmed by that. So I do want to, um, thank you for that answer to a repetitive question.
Anything else from staff? In that case, uh, I'll, I'll now, uh, close the public hearing and reserve, uh, remarks to the commission. Um, let's open the discussions in deliberation and see where it takes us. Commissioner Educas first, then Commissioner McFale.
Um, I, I understand that the first thing that, um, I thought of when I looked at this project is what about SOAR? And, uh, so I looked very carefully at the language that the voters approved. And, um, there are, uh, at least, um, three mentions in the, um, initiative having to do with, um, support for farm worker housing. Um, in that it also supports the long-term viability of agriculture in our county. Um, I understand that there might be some, um, interpretations, um, with regard to what is urban and, uh, where farm worker housing, um, should go ideally. Um, I think that, um, even though it wasn't specifically mentioned in our staff report, looking at the EIR, um, the, uh, project's applicability to SOAR limitations, um, was considered and that, um, there is, um, uh, a, a provision for farm worker housing to be allowed on ag lands, even though eventually um, the Board of Supervisors will have to, um, make a statement of overriding considerations if they decide to approve this project that, um, there will be a significant and unavoidable, uh, loss of farmland. However, listening to, um, the applicant's, um, representative, uh, Ms. Woodburn saying that perhaps, um, avocados would, um, that crop would actually be assisted by, um, the use of the water. I thought that's, that's an, that's an interesting, um, you know, factoid to consider. Um, uh, I think that, um, this is something that, um, as long as I've been a commissioner, has been a challenge, um, going back to, um, uh, even when I was, um, in, on the Thousand Oaks, uh, Running Commission. And, um, I think that, um, uh, farm workers deserve decent housing. Um, housing that, um, would be no, uh, less, uh, comfortable and, um, affordable and livable as, as, uh, you know, my own kids, uh, would, would desire. So, um, I would, um, I'm very happy, I'm very pleased with, um, the questions that were, um, answered with regard to laundry facilities. And, um, you know, in a perfect world, would, um, would elevators and, um, and covered parking and, uh, all the other amenities that, uh, that we would all, um, expect in housing. You know, it might not be, um, practical to, um, to have everything and the need is, uh, dire. It's ongoing. Um, this, um, helps some. I think that, um, one thing that I was wondering if we could add to, um, the recommendation that, that, um, staff has recommended that we have considered is also to, um, to include the, um, the items that were brought forward with regard to, um, electrical vehicle, uh, charging and the, um, seeking of specific, um, you know, support for sustainable, um, you know, items that could be included. The, the two things that, um, my commissioners, um, the chair and the Commissioner, uh, White included in, in their comments. So, um, I would move staff's recommendation with those two, um, uh, items to, to see if we could include those somehow. Oh, and also recognition that, um, the, um, representative for the, um, builder, um, stated that they would be working with staff um, regarding, uh, the plant pallet and also, um, the annexation question with, um, Pleasant Valley.
Hey, um, is that all part of your motion, that last couple of comments?
I, I'd sure like to, I'd sure like to see those things, um, decided or fleshed out if that's, um, part of our recommendation. Where, those to me were outstanding issues.
Okay.
Chair, Chair King, Chair King, Commissioner.
Uh, I think Commissioner McFale is next and then?
I think I hear, I think I hear, um, our planning director weigh in. So maybe, um, my, my motion needs to be cleaner or explained.
Okay.
Yes, uh, Chair and Commissioners, it'd be helpful. I didn't, I don't think staff understood you were moving it into a motion, which is fine. But I want to be able to get up on the screen then, so we can be typing what Commissioner Educas is considering and anything else that other commissioners might add that will help clarify and we can make corrections as we go. So I'm going to ask, uh, Planning Manager Fong to go ahead and, oh, she's got it right there. So if you wouldn't mind, um, Commissioner Educas, let's have you reread those bullets there and see if we are reflecting and capturing what you were indicating. I, I would note on the charging EV, we should be specific about your recommendation. The building code talks about ten percent of the parking, number of parking spaces and creating the infrastructure, which is what the architect Diddy Parker had indicated. So possibly you want to add a number, maybe it's five percent, something of the ten percent if you're seeking actual stations. But something quantifiable would be helpful, uh, as part of that recommendation.
Okay, um, could I just interject before we get that far down the road, uh, Director Ward? We have two other commissioners that wanted to comment and we have no second yet. And I'd like to hear from the other commissioners before we start writing words on the motion, if that's okay. It looks like Commissioner Educas is nodding. So, uh, let's move on to, and by the way, appreciate Director Ward that you, you're very thorough in getting ahead of these things, but if we could just, uh, finish working through the commission, that would be helpful. Um, Commissioner McFale, I think you were next, and then Commissioner White.
Oh, one quick comment, uh, charging stations doesn't really need to be in the motion, but anyway, uh, I had a couple of concerns. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say the need for the farm worker housing is extraordinary. And even low income housing for others is extraordinary in this county. Uh, right now, as you all know, I'm in, uh, Alabama for family reasons and, uh, you look at rents here and, uh, it's unbelievable the difference, but then you have to live in Alabama, so I understand. Uh, buffering has always been one of my concerns when projects want to be built next to agricultural operations. When they're talking about, uh, trees that are, uh, need little watering and plants that, uh, are drought resistant, they do not make very good buffers, I'm sorry to say. Uh, at least on the agricultural sides of, of this project, they need to look at plants that actually will prevent pesticides and dust and stuff from entering the project. Uh, drought, drought resistant crops and trees, uh, will not have the foliage to be able to do that. Uh, I think we've answered, uh, I think we've answered the Quimby question. I hope that can be solved somewhere down the line with the project. My only real concern is traffic. Knowing the traffic on Somas Road and having traveled Somas Road on numerous occasions, traffic would be my main concern. But with that said, maybe somewhere down the line, Caltrans and the county can work something out to where there might be a stoplight, might not be a stoplight, but that's somewhere down the line when the project's fully developed. It's a great project if, if it comes out anywhere near looking like the architect's rendering. It's going to be an asset to the area, Somas area and the city of Camarillo. And I just hope that projects like this will be considered in other areas, but with my past life as the ag commissioner, obviously I would presume they're not, would prefer that they're not built on prime agricultural land, but they be in adjacent to at least cities where services and parks and things like that would be more readily available. And with that, I wish each and every one of them a great deal of success with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McPhail. Commissioner White.
Okay, thank you, Chair King. I'll say it, say now that I'm very much in support of this project. I'm very much a fan of agriculture in Ventura County and I think each of the planning commissioners feels that way also, and I think each of the members of the Board of Supervisors also very much in support of agriculture and, and taking actions that will support agriculture. And until a few years ago, I was the owner and operator of an organic farm myself and had agricultural employees and I understand the, the importance of ag labor. It is extremely important in, in Ventura County. I was fortunate that the workers that I had were able to find housing close by and I didn't have to worry that much about it, but I know in the big picture of Ventura County, there's a huge shortage. I'm very much in support of, of this project. I heard during the, the public hearing and testimony and the presentation by the applicant, four things that I would like to reiterate and I think Commissioner Adukas touched on each of those four. And I'm, I'm close to seconding her motion, but let me reiterate what I heard and what I see as the four important things I think we should include in our motion to approve. I already mentioned that EV charging stations. I, I heard what the architect said and I heard what Director Ward said. I was disappointed that nowhere in the project description or the EIR was there a mention made of, of charging stations. I know that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. Dealing with agriculture is one thing, but we can also deal with addressing climate change at the same time. I think it is important that the policies and programs that our commission and the Board of Supervisors approved for climate action get incorporated into each of these projects. And it wasn't, it hasn't been included in this project. And so that needs to be included, whether it's in the code or not. My, my understanding on EV charging stations is that it's the county policy to support their installation everywhere unless it's not feasible. We, we don't need charging stations at cell phone towers, for example, or a water tank on top of a mountain, but certainly on residential development, it's essential. And I would take issue with Barbara, who earlier said farmworkers don't have electric vehicles. The reality is the governor's announced that 10 years from now, I believe, that we will no longer be able to buy gasoline diesel powered vehicles in California. Everybody will be driving electric vehicles soon and the infrastructure to keep them charged needs to be incorporated into every project that the county considers. I won't belabor that point beyond what I've already done. I'm, I'm in agreement with, with Commissioner Adukas's comments on, on the landscaping. We just visited native landscapes. But at our last meeting, while it maybe not has been approved yet by the board, I think that it's time to implement it. I have no doubt that the board will, will adopt that. I would, I would gamble that they will. And maybe it could be couched in such a way that without assumption realized. The third thing is, is Chair King's comment on sustainability grants and applying for that. I think again, like EV charging stations, the county needs to routinely be in line for these sustainability grants. We see a new administration coming in Washington that is going to be doling out money to local government for climate action programs and Ventura County needs to be ready to go to step up with shovel-ready projects and programs to accept that money and people who write grant applications ready to apply for that money. The fourth thing has to do with the, the Parks District, and I think it does make sense for us to recommend that the board consider taking action or taking the initiative on annexing this property into the local park district. So if that's, if that's what Commissioner Adukas was also thinking, I, I would, I would second her motion, but I ask her the question, is that consistent with what you were suggesting?
Chair King, can I respond?
Go ahead and respond, but folks, there's a fourth commissioner here that's going to weigh in, just be aware of that.
Okay, um, regarding the landscaping palette, I want to also consider the expertise of our former ag commissioner with regard to an ag buffer and that, that, that palette might be different than the one that we just considered and recommended but isn't final through. So that's the, that's the only difference. Otherwise, that's, that's what my motion is to accept staff recommendations and then just have, you know, planning commission, I don't know, wish lists.
Okay. Anything else? Then let me share some thoughts, if it's all right with you guys. First thought is, not only do I heartily support this project, I think unfortunately, while it makes a significant contribution, it's not nearly enough, not even close. And to the extent that this project maybe encourages others, that's really my hope. The other thought, as a former city planning commissioner like Commissioner Adukas is, just getting a project approved along with the subdivision and the CUP, that's all well and good, but that doesn't get the project built. Because unfortunately, the applicant has to find a way to pay for it. And, you know, I happened to ask Mr. Bertolino what that EIR cost. And it was somewhere north of $160,000, which makes me scratch my head and say, how does anybody afford to build an affordable project or a farmworker project? Having said that, I wholly support this project, but I would not support anything that mandates additional costs that might jeopardize a project from ever being built. On the other hand, I think I've made clear and I think Commissioner Adukas captured that, that I think it is appropriate for the commission to make recommendations to the board to consider. And you notice my recommendation didn't just say, it'd be nice to do these things. My recommendation was it would be better to find ways to creatively pay for them rather than burden the project. And the developer seems anxious to do that. Commissioner White identified what probably would be coming down the pipe, great idea. In a prior life, one of my jobs was writing grants. It was the least fun part of my job, but it required me to do a lot of grant research and a lot of, you know, talking to folks and figuring out what program officers wanted in representing their organizations to see on paper before they provided a grant. This is mostly for private foundations. And I've written big grants from government agencies and they, I sometimes question whether it doesn't cost more to get them than the value that we get from them, but that's, that's just an editorial comment from living in that world. Bottom line is, it takes a lot of folks working together to bring those resources. But one of the pluses of doing that is it creates an engaged community of rabid supporters beyond the developer. And I think that's the great potential blessing of a process like that. So I will support recommending that, that we encourage the board to consider aiding and abetting, securing grants and other funding sources, particularly for sustainability elements that the project doesn't currently contain. And that could, we could comment on EV charging stations, on solar generating systems, maybe even batteries. I'm not sure entirely on board with landscaping because knowing the process, that happens in the building. As, as a project moves forward, we, they don't have firm landscape architects' plans yet in place. And by the way, I hate crate myrtles in commercial and multifamily units. I've seen too damn many of them die in the middle of a parking lot and provide no shade. But that's just my personal opinion. Bottom line is, I don't know how we encourage the county in the permitting process to look harder at those, but I'm not sure it's, it's up to the board to direct that. So having said that, you know, I'd support a comment as Commissioner Adukas suggested, but I would support one that's more narrowly tailored and just doesn't go off and create a big wishlist with no way to pay for it. Okay, so with that, go ahead, Commissioner McPhail.
Yeah, I, I'm going to support the motion, but I'd just like the other commissioners to realize that the applicants already talked about EV stations and the requirement of 10% of, of the parking spaces. That's 63 to 64 EV stations. And no disrespect to Commissioner White, but at this particular time in the project, I would think 63 EV stations is more than adequate even for the next 10 or 20 years when we can no longer drive a gas vehicle.
Okay, Commissioner White, go ahead.
Commissioner McPhail, I would, I would totally agree. If in fact, there are 63 in there, I'm all for it and, and I can rationalize not being adamant about asking for what's already there. When I spoke with Justin yesterday, I understood that it was not in there, that there was no requirement that it be done. If in fact, code requires it or somebody else requires it, I'm good with it, needs to be in there. The county needs to be doing this on every, if they're already doing it, I'm happy.
Well, somewhere I read that all new development in the county requires EV stations in parking or subdivisions. So somewhere I read that in either the staff report, the EIR or somewhere, but it mentioned at least 10% of the parking spaces had to have, had, had to have had EV charging stations. So I read that somewhere in the reading and I know I didn't pull that out of the air. So somewhere someone's requiring 10% of parking spaces in development to be EV stations, charging stations, or the potential to be EV parking spaces with the wiring at least there. I read that, so it's somewhere in either the EIR or the staff report, because that's what I read.
Commissioner Adukas?
Chair King, could we go back to Director Ward and, and staff because we have a motion in a second? And I just want to check to see if they've got clarity on what the motion in the second entails.
Well, actually, I was going to bring Director Ward back in with his handy Word document so he could craft our comments. And I thought that this might be the perfect time to segue to that.
Chair, Chair King, Commissioners, we'll bring up what Planning Manager Fogg has and work from that bullet list to, I think it still captures most of it, but you all can look at it and make adjustments to it.
I, I can bring it up, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm not clear now after Commissioner King's discussion if these are going to be changed to recommend that the board encourage finding funding for items. If you could clarify, thanks.
Okay, well, my hope was recommend that the board encourage and participate in identifying potential sources of funding for sustainability elements of the project not currently incorporated. Does that sound like what I said, everybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm looking for, for Commissioner Adukas to nod. I live for.
I don't know that I would limit it to sustainability elements. I don't know that I would limit it to sustainability elements. Certainly, being sources for the, for the project itself and, and the buildings and grading and everything. I think we want to encourage funding, seeking funding for the whole thing.
Well, I, frankly, that's up to the applicant. I mean, we don't want to fund their whole project. I was just looking for enhancements. And, and, and to, to mention to the board, we had this discussion about additional ways we could encourage that.
I, I would prefer to see the, the way you had it before you erased the, the item, the bullet that was in there that got deleted. Mindy, are you doing this?
I don't, I don't know who's doing what, and I don't remember what bullets were there and got deleted, so.
Give us a moment. Let me see if we can.
There you go.
Go backwards. Hold on.
Cut and paste.
I understand this is a condition, proposed condition of approval by Commissioner White. What I'm not clear on is, is the commission agreeing to impose this condition of approval? Or are we now moving on to an encouragement recommendation? That will be more.
I think what we want to do is an encouragement recommendation with regard to all four of these items, the EV stations, the landscaping palette, sustainability grants, and annexation to the Park District. These were just items that, that were brought forward and, and I'd like to see them included as, not as a condition of approval, but as something that the board should consider in line with the first part of staff's recommendation that we simply consider this project. I would like them to also consider these four items in addition. That would be my motion.
And then, understanding too, and seconding that motion. So, Mindy.
That answers the, the concern that, that our chair brought up, a legitimate concern with burdening, you know, certainly all we do is set the table. It's not a party until there's food and people. So the, the, I, the issue that he brought up with regard to weighing a project down and, you know, spending more money and making it more difficult to build the project, I thought was legitimate. And so I think that having the language that we recommend the board consider these items is a requirement of the project.
Yeah. I don't, what I'm looking at on the screen is not something I support.
Yeah, I don't think it's ready. I think we take the last sentence and, and copy it and insert it back into the, the first document you showed us and then wordsmith it the way we want. We have, we have one of the world's greatest wordsmithers on the commission here. Probably a couple.
Well.
I include you, Chair King.
I'm more like a, a word grape stomper.
I hear you're a good grant writer.
You know, it's like baseball. If you hit the ball one out of three times, you're considered pretty damn good.
You're a Hall of Famer.
And, and I'll bet that Commissioner McPhail has done his fair share of grant writing as I did when I was APCD director.
I do want to make sure that Commissioner McPhail's caveat regarding the buffer also be included in that consideration of the palette.
You know, I know there's some great native plants while we're waiting for staff to get that up there that are, would make great buffers. I think of, for example, lemonade berry is an evergreen plant. Bush, small tree, drought tolerant, nice looking, would not be affected by, by dust or drought. There, I'm sure lots of plants that could be done. We discussed this at our last meeting and agreed to it. I believe, I agree with Commissioner Adukus. This should be incorporated into this project. Why not?
Well, I guess my comment to that would be that by the time this project goes through the permitting process, I suspect that that part of the zoning ordinance will be in place and it will be evaluated based on that.
I, I see that whoever is at the keyboard is going to omit shall be conditioned.
Good.
The, the bullet type implies that those last three unfilled bullets are, that go, that they go under the, the main one. I think that there were four. If you could just highlight all of them and then go to the bullets and make them all the same.
Thank you, Commissioner Adukus. Thank you for that. Chair King had said that he wanted us to recommend, encourage, and participate identifying funding sources for various items. And that is what I was trying to list out under that sentence.
Yeah.
Okay, then review annexation options for Pleasant Valley Park District certainly isn't subordinate to finding potential sources of funding.
Yeah, there are four items that need to go in there. One, two, three, four. Chair King has, has his comments, but the, the motion on the floor has four, four items, not.
I'm still unclear on those four items, Commissioner White or Chair King, if you could please help.
Okay, well.
First bullet, make it a one. Second, make the one a two. Make the two a three. Make the last bullet a four.
In other words, make all of them a red, black dot.
Chair, Chair King, commissioners, let's, you, you started with Commissioner Nora putting forward a motion after you all provided your comments. So we should be starting with Commissioner, no, I'm sorry, Commissioner Adukus, apologize, to list out what she is proposing and then to get a second. So let's go back to Commissioner Adukus and please indicate on the screen your adjustments, whether it's changing the bullets or numbering, however you choose. And then we'll see if we can get a second.
Okay. Instead of having a bullet, one, two, and a bullet, if we could change all those four things to simply bullets, that way in not numbering them, they're not in order of importance. They're just four separate outstanding issues. And that they all have their own bullet that is black. It's a pain in the neck to do this, and I'm sorry whoever is. Here we go. Okay, encouraging, okay. I support staff's recommendations. In addition, recommend the board consider, recommend that the board consider encouraging in identifying potential sources of funding for sustainability elements and enhancements, semicolon. And then, are you ready to go on?
Yes, thank you.
And then, okay, and then beginning at install, if you could just highlight install to the end, no, highlight beginning at install and go to the end of that sentence. Control X and then put it in front so it'll say, installing an appropriate number of electric vehicle charging stations in compliance, comma, in compliance with the, yeah, installing. Okay. Then working with staff and the applicant to review plant, plant palette for landscaping and agricultural buffer. Working with the, the product, the applicant and staff. Yeah, very good.
Do we want to say our native plant palette?
This is the only thing that I have to say about that, Phil, is that when a project comes through, there's a picture in time of what is required. And to be fair, I, I heard staff telling us that has not been adopted yet. So to, to kind of like move the goalposts is not really fair. It's something that we want. They expressed that they were willing to review the plant palette. And I'm gonna take them that, that they said that in good faith. And so I don't want to push it.
Yeah, I agree.
I could, yeah, there, I'm, I'm good with the, the way it's, it's been written up there.
Okay, and then after buffer and that semicolon, can we say and? Then reviewing annexation options to the Pleasant Valley Park District. It was not for. And then period after district. And, um, and perhaps say, recommend that the board additionally consider in addition to the other things.
Oh, what happened?
It would be, ideally, it would ordinarily be helpful to have the, the project applicant to, to weigh in if they, if they objected to, you know, this. I, I, when running the. So, so if you wanted to reopen the, not to, not to rehash everything, but just to find out if we've gone really astray. I don't think we have.
Okay, let me, let me do this in two steps. First, let's see if there's a second on the motion as written.
King, Phil White here, I second the motion.
Okay. Having said that, I'd like to reopen the public hearing and ask the applicant if they are okay with the motion as considered.
I'm sorry, Jeff Barnes, this is Jeff Barnes, County Council. Getting lots of feedback.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't make out what you said.
All right, I'll try again. There we go, that's better. Jeff Barnes, County Council. I think we need more wordsmithing because the, the top line says, recommend that the board additionally consider. And then the second bullet point says, installing an appropriate number of electric vehicle charging stations. And so the, the board's not gonna be installing anything, I don't think. I don't think that's the intent. So I, I think we might need another encouragement lead in there, if, if that's what your commission had in mind.
How about just recommend an appropriate, the board recommend, recommend to the board an appropriate number? Or the board consider an appropriate number?
I'm good with that.
Requiring installing an appropriate number.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support that.
No. I won't support that either. I can support the, the board recommending installing an appropriate number of electric vehicles. But that's as far as I would, I would go with that. Recommend the board, consider whatever, installing and requiring installing.
Recommend, consider, require, requiring.
Yeah.
Just forget, forget recommend installing and just rec, recommending an appropriate number of like electrical being, vehicle charging stations.
That's, that's good.
It's cleaner.
Okay, thanks, thanks for addressing that. I, I said my piece.
Well, that's what we have you here for, Council Barnes.
Beacon of good wordsmithers.
Yeah, okay. Now, are you ready to bring in the applicant to bless this?
Chair King, commissioners.
Yes.
One additional staff suggestion, Ms. Fogg, if you can highlight in the second bullet, in compliance, that might better be worded as to implement the general plan policy. The reason I raise that is there are no set numbers in the policy itself, and you're recommending that that be considered to implement the policy.
Better and better.
And another good wordsmither.
All right. Now can I ask the applicant if they're okay with this?
I hope so. It's 2:30 here and I'm starting.
All right, I, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna defer one more time to Patrick at AmCal.
Yeah. Appreciate your deliberations and we are okay with that on the screen. Thank you.
I, I have one concern. This is Barbara. With respect to the annexation options, that would be assuming that the, that the annexation costs would either be covered by the Park District or the county. But that should not be a burden placed on the project.
So Barbara, it's just reviewing options. There's no, nothing mandatory about it. Not yet.
Well, I mean, that's the point. I mean, if, if they're gonna review it and they're gonna decide, oh yeah, the applicant has to annex. If, you know, if, if they want to annex or the Park District want to annex at their cost, then I think that's something we can absolutely live with. But if the burden for that annexation is placed on the project, that's where I would have a.
I just would like to clarify.
But in that case.
I would just like to clarify as maker of the motion that these are items that were outstanding. These are not intended to burden the applicant at all. I just want to make it clear that these items were raised. They're not put to bed. And I think that it's within the board's ability to decide what is appropriate. And I have every confidence that they will do everything in their power to see this to fruition. So I think the four bullet points stand and I'm ready to call the question.
Okay. Any other comments from the applicant? Okay. Any other comments from the applicant? Hearing none. I'm closing the public hearing again. We have a motion, the second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Then will Secretary please call roll?
Okay, Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Adukas?
Aye.
Commissioner McPhail?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, the motion has passed. Now, now it's time to get a report from our planning director on any matters to discuss.
Thank you, Chair King. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone. We're all excited to be into 2021 and to put 2020 behind us. And everyone to stay safe and healthy in these hopefully only first couple months of challenges, and then we'll get into a better trend line with our COVID situation countywide. The only reportable item really is to talk about your schedule coming up. We do not have any items for the month of February. We do on March 4th have three items for you. One is a wireless project. And the other item we have is an appeal of a lot coverage determination. This actually relates to a code enforcement case, which you'll be hearing from the Code Enforcement Division, and we will be supporting them in that hearing. And then the last item will be another ordinance project before you coming to, for amendments to the non-coastal zoning ordinance related to beekeeping, rooster keeping regulations, and several other minor ordinance changes. So we'll have three items on March 4th. Thank you.
Okay. Questions, Commissioners? Where are we? Planning Commission, have any items they want to introduce? Or discuss? Commissioner Adukas?
I just want to thank Commissioner White for his stewardship of the gavel and that I'm grateful that he'll be here at least at least today and a little longer and appreciate my, I want to express my appreciation for everything that he's done on the Planning Commission. You've made Ventura County a better place to live as a result of your recommendations and your participation on this commission. And I just wanted to say thank you and give you that recognition.
Wow, thank you very much. Yeah, I am here today. Perhaps I'll continue. Remains up to the supervisor who he's going to appoint, could be me. So you may see me longer. It's his decision. I want to thank you for that, attaboy. I want to compliment Chair King for a job really well done today. I know I paid a lot of attention to Commissioner Adukas in her conducting meetings and stumbled along with lots of help from her. And so, job, Jim. I do have some comments I would like to add of my own that I think are important to pass on to staff. I think the initial study assessment guidelines don't seem to address climate change. Nothing in the EIR, there was really nothing in the EIR for this project that discussed climate change. Maybe it was easy saying that EV charging stations are included, but there was nothing. I think it's in the guidelines that preparers of EIRs will pay attention. I think it's really important that staff, planning staff, implement the climate policies and programs that were adopted by our commission and the board of supervisors in the update to the 2040 general plan. Climate change is an emergency. I know that it's kind of a new thing for staff to be dealing with, but I think they can do a better job in in implementing those policies when they review products. I think it looks like that the parking regulations need to be modified to confirm the requirements for EV chargers. As I, as I said before, it won't be long before all of us are going to be driving electric vehicles and we need to have the infrastructure in place to support that. So I would pass those suggestions on to staff. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner McPhail?
I would just like to thank him for his chairmanship and let him know, and he already knows this, that I enjoyed just the two of us being in the chambers at for several meetings, and I think it worked out really well, and it is my choice to be there, even though I don't have to be, but it is, it is fun to have more somebody there besides yourself sitting there. And so we had some good, good conversations and good discussions, and to me, that's what it's all about. So thank you if you're, if you're here in March, I guess, great. If not, wish you only the best. Thank you very much, Earl. I appreciate that. Yes, it was fun hanging out with you there up at the DAS. And I encourage you all to keep doing what you do. It's very important work. Thank you for your service.
And now I will like to add my own kudos to our colleague, Commissioner White. He and I probably have tangled more than anyone else on the commission, but I do respect his passion for this county, for our environment, for the genuine perils that exist that he continues to call our attention to. And Bill, you should be very, very proud of the work you've done in this county, and I know it hasn't nearly ended. And I know that you're carrying the torch on the Climate Emergency Committee. And whether you're sitting with us or whether you're driving staff nuts on that committee, we know that you will continue to champion the best of our environmental concerns. So Bill, thank you very much.
Jim, yes, serving on the County Planning Commission has truly been one of the highlights of my life. I feel very fortunate to have been appointed and it's been a great experience.
Very good. And then finally, I'm not sure my colleagues were all that wise at the beginning of the meeting, but.
Everybody, everybody has to take a turn driving the bus.
I, I promise that I'll try to be a good servant of the commission.
You will.
If I can.
You will.
And with that, unless I hear any objections, I'm going to go ahead and enter in the meeting.